Medford City Council, November 14th, 2023 is called to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barris. Counsel Carviallo. Counsel Collins. Counsel Knight. Counsel Scarpelli. Counsel Sang. President Morell.
Present, seven present, zero absent. Please rise and salute the flag. Announcements, accolades, remembrance reports, and records. Records, the records of the meeting of October 24th, 2023 are passed to Counsel Sang. Counsel Sang, how did you find?
I found them in order and moved to approve.
On the motion of Counsel Sang, seconded by Counsel Collins. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero the negative. The motion passes. Reports of committees 23-398, October 24th, Subcommittee on Ordinance and Rules. Report to follow going to, I know it's been a little while. Can we remember what this was?
No.
I know it was in Barris, but I will also look it up to jog our memory from what we met on.
This was on commissions. And we've met on drafts for Youth and Gender Equity Commission's starting phase. So, motion to approve.
On the motion of Vice of Barris, seconded by Counsel Collins. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero the negative. The motion passes.
Madam President.
Vice of Barris.
Motion to suspend the rules to take papers 23-445, 23-450, and 23-451 under, out of order.
2345, 445, 23450, 23...
451, that would be the grant of location followed by the elections.
On the motion of Vice of Barris to suspend the rules to take those papers out of order, seconded by Counsel Sang. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero the negative. Motion passes. The rules are suspended to take those papers out of order, starting with 23445. Notice of a public hearing, petition for grant of location, National Grid, North Andover, Mass, proposed electrical main, new conduit, Main Street, National Grid Plan Number WR-30658427-4, Medford, Mass, City Clerk's Office. You are hereby notified that by order of the Medford City Council, the Medford City Council will hold a public hearing in the Howard F. Alden Chambers at Medford City Hall, 85 George B. Hassett Drive, Medford, and via Zoom on Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m., a link to be posted no later than Friday, November 10th, on a petition by Massachusetts Electrical Company, Doing Business as National Grid, for permission to construct a line of underground electrical conduits, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way or ways herein after named. Wherefore appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to excavate the public highways and run and maintain underground electrical conduits, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity, said underground conduits to be located sustainably, substantially, in accordance with the plan filed and marked Main Street, Medford, Mass, Plan Number WR-30658427-4, originally dated July 13th, 2023, and received and filed in the office of the city clerk on August 18th, 2023, and available for inspection in the office of the city clerk, Medford City Hall, Room 103, 85 George B. Hassett Drive, Medford, Mass, 02155. The following are the streets and highways referred to in Plan WR-30658427, Main Street, National Grid, to install beginning at a point approximately 15 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Main Street and South Street.
Motion to waive the reading in favor of someone?
On the motion of Counsel Sang to waive the reading in favor of a summary from the petitioner, seconded by Counsel Scarpelli. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero the negative. Motion passes. Do we have a representative from National Grid? If you want to come up to the mic. And then, do we have a city engineer here, or just National Grid? Okay. Yeah, if you could just, that should, one second, that mic should turn on, otherwise, or you're going to put it, okay.
Hi.
And then just name an address for the record, please.
Yes.
You're good there.
Yeah, hi, my name is Bob Coulter from National Grid.
Thank you.
Mike Noville from National Grid.
Cam Hansel from National Grid.
Thank you. Yeah, if you could just give us a summary of the project, that's before us.
Yes, hi, National Grid is intending to place three conduits down Main Street, approximately right in front of the fire station, down beyond the medical building, attaching two manholes together. This will allow us to place a new piece of cable. The existing infrastructure that is there is no longer usable. It's collapsed. We can't get our cable through. So, we're intending to place a new conduit down through that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Scarpelli.
Thank you. What time of day will this work be?
You can determine that.
Okay, so we can do something at night, because right now, that area is a mess traffic-wise, so. And the last piece, I know maybe the city engineer, the paving, was that going to be curb-to-curb?
Working with Owen. Our intention right there is to do the bike lane portion of that. And we are going to be responsible for the entire square footage of the curb-to-curb paving. That could be done anywhere else in the city. That was the intention.
So, will be done curb-to-curb?
That particular area will be the bike lane, the distance of the bike lane, approximately three feet. So, we won't go all the way curb-to-curb in that area, not to just, to keep that a narrower excavation trench, but in place of doing the curb-to-curb that we are responsible for, we will do that in another area of the city.
It is to the city engineer. If you want to come up, just.
Yeah, if you can explain that.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate that. I just see the city engineer perhaps disagreeing, so.
Hi, Owen Wortella, City Hall. We have discussed this with National Grid about the restoration limits, going curb-to-curb once we've just repaved it, seemed that it could be more problematic in that scenario where they could undermine what we just did. So, we limited the restoration to the bike lane so that they could do a saw cut line on the paint line, and then it would seal the seam, and then come back through and do the painting of the bike lane and milling and paving in that area.
Okay, but are we now in the practice? Because it's great news if it is, but that are now our public utilities that come in to open up our streets? It'll be curb-to-curb like we do with the private entities as well?
That is normally the case, yes.
Thank you. All right, that's great.
Thank you.
If I could just, Engineer Wortella, thank you. And my understanding is, in this case, because it's brand-new, in this case, we would feel that going milling curb-to-curb.
Right.
Would undermine what we've just rebuilt. Right, right. So, you're going to do that, but then the square footage that they otherwise would have been responsible for, we're going to get repaved somewhere else?
I, that's news to me, but sure.
I'd love to take it. Okay. If we can.
Elm Street.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to make sure, because that sounds like it, that should be, that seems fair to me, so.
Counsel Sang.
I, there is a point in here about sidewalks. I just wanted to make sure that when we redo the sidewalks, that we're doing them with concrete and not asphalt. I see.
Yeah. We restored like-for-like. They are concrete, they will be returned as concrete.
Great, thank you.
Now, if I can, while the engine is here. The, how long again will the process take for this project?
We're anticipating approximately one week of completion.
All right, so I think that, two reasons for the question, that that area is a mess. I think we all know that. Now that it's all right turns there, I mean, that area is flooded in the morning now. This could be something done at night with the city's request? Is there a better time to do it, or?
It would be at the discretion of the department.
Police, okay. All right, I hope, we'll have that conversation.
For safety reasons, we would defer to the traffic sergeants.
To the traffic, okay. And that's something that, if we can, as part of the record, we'll reach out, as part of a motion, to reach out to the chief of police to request their thoughts. And if it's not, that we have a detailed informational plan that goes out to our residents, and just because that, I take that, I think everybody knows that trip. We've heard phone calls and emails from multiple residents about that right turn only being a major change. And then if you drive through Medford Square now, you see why. But I think that, making sure that everybody's informed of what happens, if it does happen, it's happened during the day. But, thank you, Medford.
Thank you. Would you like to make that a B paper?
Please, if you can.
Thank you. Vice of Barris.
Thank you, Madam President. An engineer should be amended. The condition is here to reflect the additional paving that we were just so graciously told that National Grid would like. Do you have suggestions we amend number five to reflect that? Do you feel like we need to change? Okay.
I have no suggestions. I'm here for questions.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Any other question? We do have to open the hearing, too. Any other questions for the councilors at this time?
Just, I would move to amend condition five to reflect that National Grid will, you know, pave another portion of road in the city based on the square footage of what they would have paved curb-to-curb.
Should we take that now, before we open up the public hearing, or after that motion? Okay, I'll take that motion now. So, we have motion from Vice of Barris to amend condition number five to reflect the curb-to-curb paving that will be done in another part of the city in lieu of this specific parcel. Second by Counsel Sang. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. And then, while he's writing that down, Attorney Mortellit, so we have a policy ordinance in the city as far as not reopening our streets again, right after we paved them, it's about, it's five years, right? Is this because this infrastructure has collapsed and this is considered an emergency? Or how, or just because it's a public utility? What, how are, how is this occurring, I guess?
I would recommend that counsel asks National Grid why this is considered an emergency work 16 months after the case.
Okay. Could you tell us why this is considered an emergency work?
Yeah, it's, we've been working through multiple permitting issues, trying to accomplish this. So, it did take some time to start that whole process, so.
So, you would have done this earlier?
We would have done this earlier. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, call the roll on the motion of Vice of Barris to amend condition five.
Yes.
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 Yes, seven the affirmative, zero the negative. The motion passes to amend condition five. Any further questions from the councilors at this time? As this is a public hearing, I need to open up the hearing. So, if there is anyone who would like to speak in favor of this paper, please come up to the mic, or raise your hand on Zoom. Our friends from National Grid, that would be you as far as speaking in favor of this. If you would favor this paper?
I favor this paper, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this paper? Seeing none, this portion of the hearing is closed. Is there anyone who would like to speak against, in opposition of this paper? Please come up to the mic, or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none, this portion of the public hearing is closed. We do have a B paper I can take, and then I'll see if there's a motion we want to make. So, we have a B paper from Counsel Scarpelli. Do you have the language for that? Could you read it back?
Counsel Scarpelli's B paper is to ask the police, ask the chief of police for his thoughts on this matter, and if, and then to get a detailed information plan to go out to residents. Right.
Thank you. So, on the motion on the B paper from Counsel Scarpelli, seconded by.
Second.
Vice of Barris. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Barris. Yes. Counsel Carviallo. Yes. Counsel Collins. Counsel Knight.
Yes.
Counsel Scarpelli. Yes. Counsel Sang. President Morell.
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero the negative. The motion passes. Do I have a motion on the main paper?
Motion to approve as amended pending the six-day public comment period.
Have a motion from Vice of Barris to approve as amended pending the six-day public comment period, seconded by Counsel Scarpelli. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, seven the affirmative, zero the negative. The motion passes. Thank you very much. Going to 23-450. 23-450, offered by President Morell, Vice President Barris, and Counsel Carviallo. Be it resolved by the Medford City Council that the Elections Commission and Elections Manager provide a report to the council listing any and all issues or procedural errors that occurred during the administration of the 2023 municipal election. Be it further resolved that the report includes specific responses to, one, the misprinting of ballots, two, the inaccurate instruction sheets provided to voters with mail ballots, three, the trainings that provided incorrect information to poll wardens and workers regarding voters bringing materials to assist them in the voting booth, and four, persistent issues with the counting of ballots in a timely manner and release of incomplete unofficial election results to the public. Be it further resolved that the mayor provide the council with a supplemental appropriations request to restore the full-time staffing levels in the Election Department. Vice of Barris.
Madam President, could we join, read Counsel Scarpelli's paper and join it with this one?
23-45, or we'll take the, should we have to take a roll call on that? So, the motion of Vice of Barris to join 23-450 and 23-451, seconded by Counsel Scarpelli. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. And this is the roll to join them, and then I'll read the 23-451 next.
Vice President Barris. Yes. Counsel Carviallo. Yes. Counsel Collins. Counsel Knight. Counsel Knight, yours.
Yes.
Yes, seven the affirmative, zero the negative. Motion passes. The papers are joined, going to 23-451, offered by Counsel Scarpelli. Be it resolved that the election coordinator report back to the city council with a detailed report and findings detailing the municipal election, which includes but is not limited to absentee ballots, polling rules and regulations, and complaints and malfunction. So, I'm going to go in order as far as the names of the papers. So, Vice of Barris, Counsel Carviallo, Counsel Scarpelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I could go through everything, but then I would leave nothing for my fellow councilors. But there was a litany of procedural errors and issues with the administration of this election, many of which I personally believe would not have occurred had the department been fully funded as this council requested, and had the department not had staff turnover as this council also requested. There's a listing here, the ones that I really want to bring to light right now, that I'm sure my fellow councilors will talk about other issues. Last election, November 2022, the state election, the city also released incomplete unofficial results that did not include, to my knowledge, early in mail voting. I don't know if that's what happened last Tuesday, but incomplete unofficial results were once again released to the public. We had been told, as we asked for an update on the previous election, that this would be fixed. It was clearly not fixed. Folks were here for up to at least four hours after polls had closed, maybe even longer than that, trying to fix an issue that shouldn't have been an issue. I just want to put that out there, that left a lot of folks in the community concerned about how ballots are being counted, et cetera, having a complete tally and accurate unofficial results. I also just want to put out there that, again, incorrect information was given to voters both by mail and at polling locations. Incorrect information as to the date that mail ballots should be returned. A sheet went out that was for the previous year's election. That should not have happened. And folks were being told that they could not have, they could not bring materials into the booths to assist them, or provide guidance to them while they were voting, and that's against the state voter bill of rights. So, again, that's just a couple of the things that I want to bring to bear. I know other folks have other things they want to bring to bear. I just think it is a serious issue when we need, I don't believe that any of these issues resulted in an outcome that is different from what the outcome should have been. However, we need to have, you know, beyond reproach trust in the process. You can't have mistakes like this. You certainly can't have a series of mistakes and errors like this, because perception is reality to a lot of folks. And there's going to be people who won't believe anything that I'm saying forever, right, about this? And that's a shame. It's, we need to have full trust of as many people as possible in this community, in the absolute and unimpeachable integrity of the electoral process. And errors like these hurt that mission. So, I hope that we will get very quick guidance and explanation as to why things happen the way they happened, and quite frankly, very quick action from the mayor to make sure that they don't happen again. And I think that action needs to come, not just in reporting to us what went wrong and how they're going to do better last time, next time, because that's what they did last time. We got a report about how we're going to do better, and then a lot of the same things happened again. So, it's an office that needs to be funded, needs to be staffed appropriately, so that you don't have errors like this occurring. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counsel Carviallo.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think Counsel Barris is right. You know, I'm not here disputing the results of the election. They are what they are. And, but it's the integrity of the office that's the question here. And, you know, this isn't a question just for Medford. This is why throughout the whole country, we're seeing people losing faith in elections by exactly what happened in our city. It's not a Trump thing or a thing, but, again, I was a full supporter of bringing in an election coordinator, because I thought we would do a better job. And the job has gotten worse. My, if I had to do that vote over again, I would have probably left it to keep in the hands of the clerk. Because when the clerk ran the elections in prior years, we've never, ever had these kinds of issues. People sitting here till 1:00 in the morning, waiting for ballots, waiting for questions. You had tapes that didn't add up to the results that were posted. Numerous, numerous errors, like Counsel Barris said, dating back to printing of the ballots, wrong instructions. People get, I don't know how our computer system allowed us to print out three and four ballots per person, per household, in different wards. I came in here with a stack of eight ballots in one house. And how does that happen? We have no idea how many of those ballots were sitting out there with no accountability. How many ballots did we print? How many ballots are left over now? Counting, counting ballots that were supposed to be in public. Things, those things just shouldn't happen. And I say, and this is the reason people don't want to come out and vote, not just here, but throughout the country, because of the integrity of what goes on here. We've investigated people in this building, the lesser things. I think some sort of outside audit needs to be done to find out why these mistakes occurred again and again, especially when Secretary of State's called you in the morning of that election, telling you where you're doing things wrong. And after, after they hung up on you, the people went back and said, "Don't listen to what they told you. You do what I tell you to do." That's not how this process is supposed to work. So, be fair and equal to everybody. Shouldn't be telling people who to vote for in elections. Shouldn't be telling people what, what kind of materials they, if somebody wants to bring something in their pocket with them, then they're allowed to do it, as long as it's not open to public. We had improper training of the officials here. We were understaffed at the polls. Every year election, we always did, we always had someone checking in and out. That's not the process anymore. Again, I'm not disputing the results. I'm not saying they would have changed. I'm just disputing the integrity of the office.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Counsel Barris and Counsel Carviallo. I think that my frustration is what's felt throughout the community. You said something very important, because what bothered me more than anything in this time in our country, you want people to get involved. And I had five to six people call me and say, "You know what? I'll never, ever vote in an election for the city ever again. I'll leave my vote just to the national agenda, and that's it." Because that's how disgusted they are. And I can see why, being part of it, this is, and I'll give you an example. Counsel Carviallo did, in running his election. He was honest, he was fair, he worked hard, and he asked volunteers to come out. And those volunteers came out to assist, like any candidate could. Any candidate could have done what Counsel Carviallo did. Now, it didn't come out in his favor, and that's life. But to hear the horrific issues that poll workers were put in, and the poll watchers, so people don't know, you're allowed to have poll watchers, and it's a machine. So, the poll watchers go out, it's a calculated strategy, where they're allowed to have poll watchers sit in a relatively close area that you can hear and see the process. The process is very simple, that the poll watchers, there's talk that they were told they can't sit down. Then they were told they can't sit down if they bring their own seats. And if that's the case, okay, bring your own seat. Poll watchers sat in their seats. And then, they were told to move 25 feet away. And then the process was very simple. The process that by law states, in the general laws that, that we had attorneys pass out to each polling station, each warden, and it said, straight out, "The process is such, when the person approaches to vote, if they have a license or not," because we had the new scanning system. And believe me, I do not blame the poll, the workers that at the poll, I don't blame them, because a lot of them are great people, and they just weren't prepared. But they had the license. As they have the license, you're supposed to sweep their name and address. They're supposed to say, "George Scarpelli, 27 Butler Street." And the poll worker responds back, "George Scarpelli." Correct. For the purpose of clarity and transparency. And then what they do is, that person has a book, same as the workers do. And they check off who comes in and votes. And then if you have a machine that works for you, volunteers that want to work for you, you then have people pick up those books every two to four hours. And then you have people in offices or at homes calling people and saying, "Hey, we see you haven't voted today. Do you need a ride?" It's a machine. It's done all over the country. What we saw this past Tuesday, I'm not even going to bring up before, well, maybe I will, because I said what happened before. I said, "Please, this is why this country is such a mess." Conspiracy theories through the roof, and I'm not a conspiracy theorist. I hate it. And what happened this past week, and the weeks before this, and understanding how this process went, was a disgrace. How much money did we lose? When you don't open up the boxes of the ballots to a few days before, you have to mail out the mailing ballots, and you realize you have, you have someone's name spelt wrong. So, they have to be thrown away. Now, you have to get ballots reprinted and rushed in, which is thousands of dollars. And then they go out, and then we realize that we're getting phone calls from Ward Six saying, "Everybody that ordered, that requested four ballots got eight. Everybody that asked for two got four. Everybody asked for three got six." And then we had to reassure the public that even though it looks bad, they cannot vote three to six times. And we said that day, that meeting before the election, "Please, if it's because you're understaffed, ask for help. If we have to approve anything from this council to assist, bring in 1,000 people from the state, whoever you need to assist." Now, Counsel Carviallo's team was very proactive. I know for sure, because my wife was one of the poll watchers, that at her location, she showed up at 7:00 where polls open, correct? Well, at 7:30, they still weren't ready to go. Then we heard some places that we had machines that weren't working. By law, when you test a machine, the notice has to go out to the public, and it has to be done in an open process. Before the election, that process has to be open to the public. They come in, and you can watch the Elections Commission test the machines. That didn't happen. That didn't happen. That didn't happen. And then as you went through the whole process, we will tell you that we were given a notice from the election director that said, the votes that were taken, the votes that were taken from early voting and absentee voting, will be put through the voting machine here at City Hall at 8:30 in the morning, and then posted at 8:00 here at City Hall. That's a memo that's public that went out to the elected officials. Then you, and then you realize, now you go through the numbers. You sit there and you go through the numbers, you have people getting the numbers, and it's a mess. Some people, you, we have, there was talks that people coming back saying that the police were being yelled at by wardens, that ballots were being counted, they didn't understand what the ballots were. We had people here counting ballots without being in public. Now, that's, it's not to, it's... Does it affect the election? No. I don't think it affects the election. But the perception of it is terrible. And if this happens in any other, any other department, things have to be taken swiftly and quickly and making sure this doesn't happen again. So I'm going to ask for, if we can, as a resolution, I would like, I would amend the existing paper to ask for our election commissioner, our election director, the, our commission to come before this council to explain in detail what happened. And one of the biggest questions I have from a lot of people that were waiting that night at 8:35, we had probably between, I believe it was 10,500 votes. And they said, that's it. And we said, wait a second. Medford has never, never been that low. What happened to the ballots that were counted in the morning? We don't know what you're talking about. So then all of a sudden, at 1:00 in the morning, they posted something that said they found the ballots, and it was 4,000 more ballots, and this is what it was. Regardless who won who lost, that just doesn't look good. Perception is reality, and this is what, this is the type of situation that brings the fire to the ignorance of our country sometimes. And that's what's sad about this. So the reason for this, the reason why I want to move forward and get a detailed report, and then ask for, you know, the Secretary of State's office to get involved, to them do an audit, because we need answers so people can understand that your elected officials are holding people accountable when they're not doing their job, so we can squash and move forward for our next elections without any other issues or concerns. Because like Counselor Baer says, perception is reality. I said it the night, the week before the election. Perception is reality. And what happened is exactly what we would hope, we were scared it would happen. Now you have a roomful of people that are just as upset because the process was terrible. It was terrible, and somebody has to be held accountable, period. Because in my position, if I left a little kid in a park by himself, unattended, guess what? The next morning, I wouldn't be working. So in the Elections Department, when you make these many mistakes, something has to be done. So, Madam President, that's my resolution. I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Seng.
Thank you, President Morell. I think what's been said here really encapsulates what went wrong. Process really does matter. I think we all agree that the results wouldn't have changed, but the process really does matter. And Counselor Scarpelli is absolutely right when he says that perception is reality. We know that this is a really difficult time for democracy in our country. We know that there's a lot of questions about elections that, and we know that we need to build trust in our election system. And that trust, we can't even, it's not just about trusting the election system, it's about having unimpeachable trust in the election system. Elections are the holiest part of our democracy. And our democracy is a sacred system in itself, and we need to really, we need to defend it. We need to make sure the process works. I, we, you know, we, the other counselors have really, I think, well enumerated the number of issues that we saw before Election Day and on Election Day. And we gave, and before this election as well, we gave the administration a fair chance to fix their mistakes. We passed resolutions, we demanded scrutiny, we went through those items line by line. We got assurances that they would be fixed for future elections. And we see what the product is today. We need, we need not only to know why what went wrong, went wrong, we need to know what accountability looks like. We need to demand that accountability as well. And it's good that we've had safeguards in our system to fall back on, like the barcodes that guarantee that each person only has one vote. But we shouldn't have to rely on our safeguards to have faith in our system. We should have faith just because the process is done well. And so there's not much I can add on to what's been said, because I think what's been said encapsulates pretty well what we need to fix, the accountability we need to demand. But I just wanted to put my thoughts and statements on the record as well.
Thank you, Counselor Seng. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, President Morell, and I appreciate the counselors who brought this forward. I want to affirm what all of my colleagues have said so far. It shouldn't need to be restated that our constituency deserves an elections office that is fully equipped at any time to defend full and fair access for every single voter. Individual staff members and volunteers and elected should not be having to fill the gaps or notice gaps or individually lobby or push staff members to do the right thing and correct issues at the 11th hour on Election Day. But this was the case last Tuesday. That was my experience. It's alarming for anybody who works with City Hall in any capacity, as an elected, as an appointed, or as a volunteer. That should never be an option, let alone be necessary. I think we all agree, if even one voter is unable to cast their ballot because of incorrect mail ballot return information, or unable to cast their ballot because they were, you know, aspersions were cast about, can I bring my voter guide into the ballot? Or even if that concern is arisen, that concern isn't supposed to happen. That's why we have voter rights. That's why they're extremely important in this city, throughout the Commonwealth. If we are condoning those issues in our elections office, even for one voter, then we failed. That's how, that's how high of a bar that we have to have for elections. As Counselor Scarpelli and others mentioned, we're in an age where unfortunately, people are out looking for reasons to cast aspersions on the voting process. We cannot continue to open the city up to this kind of liability. And it's extremely frustrating, because the City Council has brought up this issue before. We've tried to, we tried to prevent this issue from happening before it happened for a second time, and it did. And we are saying now, as a council, we can't condone a disorganized, inconsistent voting experience, or even really a difficult voting experience for any voter. That's not how it's supposed to be. Voting isn't a privilege. It's a right, and it shouldn't be difficult, it should be easy. And it was difficult. I appreciate the resolution to ask the administration for appropriation to fulfill full staffing in the elections office. I think that's necessary. I think we saw it was necessary before this election. And now I think that we're again seeing the symptoms of an underfunded, essential municipal service. I think that we need to see this office restored to its full capacity, because this is what a lack of capacity looks like. We need to see what accountability looks like, as Counselor Seng said. And we need to know what went wrong specifically, and we need to know what will change specifically tomorrow, next week, the week after that, so that our multiple elections next year will be airtight, and that every resident that has felt a lack of confidence or disenfranchised by this process can know that our next elections are multiple, very consequential elections next year will be airtight. So I hope that the administration is listening, and I hope that they will respond with the urgency that we feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. Just one, my fellow counselors have covered pretty much everything. I do just want to note that elections are objectively more complicated these days. There's early voting, there's permanent mail ballots, there's Election Day voting. And the council, I think, really, under the request and advisement of our previous elections coordinator, moved to that commission format to streamline this process. And unfortunately, as a result, that commission and that office, well, the commission, the office was understaffed. And this is something that council pointed out time and time again. We asked for that office to be staffed up, and it was not heard. So we did one thing, and then we got a negative outcome from it, because the mayor's end was not upheld essentially from our wishes. So again, I think, just want to make both those things clear, that there is a lot of moving pieces. There are more moving pieces than there ever have been in our elections, our local elections. And we made a change that was asked for, and we believe would absolutely streamline and make this process easier, but without the staffing, it doesn't work. So I appreciate Vice President Baer's bringing that up, as well as the appropriation for that staffing that we've been asking for this whole time. So I'll go back to Vice President Baer, and then I know there's likely a lot of folks who want to speak on this, so I want to make sure we can open up the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And you, I'll be brief, because you basically just made my point. We voted in the spring of 2022 to adopt a piece of state law that modernized the system and moved us from the clerk and registrar voters to a formal elections commission. The intent of this body was that we would have an elections department with a director that would be at least as well-staffed as it was previously. Under the clerk registrar voter system, you had the full-time clerk, three full-time staff in the elections office, as well as the full-time elections coordinator for much of the year. Then you also had the volunteer board of registrars, that was an oversight body. We moved to the elections commission, and the budget came back. We went from five, essentially five full-time staff, to two and a half, right? We went, we now have two full-time staff, one 20-hour-a-week halftime person. That position's not even filled, because nobody wants it. It doesn't make sense to have a 20-hour-a-week position. You had a ton of work of this election then fall on election commissioners, who are not supposed to be running the election, they're supposed to be certifying results, overseeing it. They're not supposed to be in the nitty-gritty. I mean, the last people in the office were the elections manager, and the elections commissioners, and LHS, which is the service the state uses. Why are the elections commissioners cleaning up, you know, this mess at the 11th hour? That should be what the staff is, staff, you should have before you staff, so you're never in that position. The commission is an oversight authority, they're not meant to be working. And I just want to be, you know, working staff. And basically, I just want to be really clear here, when you basically cut the staff in half, and then you try to backfill with volunteers, or poll workers, or temporary workers, it's not going to work out. And we were very clear about that from the get-go. There's an election in 14 weeks, there's an election in March. There are four elections between the one we just had, including the one we just had in next November. As the president just said, elections are more complicated than ever, they're more frequent than ever, they require more resources. And instead, it seems that the choice was made, that this was a place where we could find cuts and save money. Now, I think, we all know my position, that the city budget is massively underfunded. I don't think the place you start finding money is in the elections department, when the council explicitly voted to modernize and fund the department, because elections are getting more complicated and requiring more staff time and requiring more attention, not less. So even if we get accountability, even if there's changes of whatever kind, even if we get a report that says, here's all the things that we did wrong, and we're going to do them better next time, it's not going to get fixed unless the department is fully funded, staffed, and staffed competently. And that needs to happen. So this council has been saying that. The whole reason we tried to do this process was to get us there. We did what was within our authority to make that happen. And then as President Morell said, the follow-up wasn't there. The actually funding and appropriating and implementing this modernization process fell flat. And we're seeing the results this year, in addition to the November 2022 election, where there were some of the similar mistakes that we saw this year happen as well. So, you know, all this council can do at this point is put forward resolutions, and then, as Counselor Scarpelli said earlier, approve the appropriations when they come down. Because if they had come down, I'm sure we would have held a special meeting to approve anything to get the additional surge resources in. The call never came, and we don't have the authority to make appropriations. So that side of things needs to be addressed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the council at this time? Counselor Seng.
Just more, this is more of a detail, but I would like to see what, if there is a report that comes out of this, I would like to see analysis of the low staffing levels, the funding problem, very specific about those questions. I would also like to see, I believe that we had talked about, or the mayor's administration has decided, that we would rely on some seasonal, more seasonal employment of employees. And I, you know, we talked at length back then, when we were reviewing the budget, about how we needed full-time staff for that department. And I'd like to see reference to that in the report.
Would you like that as an amendment?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Any other further discussion?
Just, I think, I think we are at the point where everybody really expressed the same thing. So I think the governing body in the state needs to get involved. And I think that this council should send a letter to the Secretary of State's office, to Galvin's office. So I'd make that in a form of motion, that we craft a letter, send it to the Secretary of State's office, and ask them to look into this process.
Would you like a speed paper?
Please.
Thank you.
And another, just if I can, Madam President, I don't want people to real, understand that when we heard all these issues, the poll workers that are there are maybe mostly the sweetest people in the world. They're doing something that's thankless, truly is thankless. But one thing that was resounding throughout that day is how they weren't trained properly. They didn't know what was right. And the sweetest woman that I love dearly, when I went to vote, she looked at me and she said, the first three letters of your name. And I said, no, that's not how it goes. But in this, these are the issues that went on everywhere. We had one poll watcher that was put 25 feet away in the corner, was presented the law. She was then moved by the warden behind, eight feet away, in compliance. And then our elections commissioner came in and said, get out, go back to where you were, that's not the rule. So it was the arrogance as well, because you had people that volunteered as part of this process, which, this is what we want in our country. We want fear and open, involved processes. So, and again, I think that letter that we draft helps with the healing and the understand that we can move on, and understand that we have something in place, Madam President, for especially November, that we feel safe and confident in our processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli. Any further discussion from the council? So you know if there's any members of the public who would like to speak, feel free to come up to the mic. Who wants to speak? Name and address for the record, please, and just, you push the button on the mic. There you go, you're good.
I'm good.
Yep, you're all set. Yep, oh yeah, yeah. I know you can't see the light, we can see it though. Okay. And just name and address for the record, please.
Michelle Verpetto, 29 Daniel Street. I'm a lifelong resident of Medford. So I was at the senior center from 6:50 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. The warden was immediately angry with me when I gave her my sheet and told her that I was an observer for the Carvajalo campaign. She called someone on the phone, and I was treated terribly all day. During this time there, I witnessed, at 10:50, there was an elderly woman who came in a wheelchair and asked for assistance in filling out her ballot. The woman stood next to her, she said she would read the names and then check off for her. What she said, what she said was, for mayor, do you want to vote for the incumbent? The elderly lady was a little confused, and she looked at her, and then she said, oh yes, the incumbent. The warden read off the city, off the city council then, and she read Beers, Collins, Tang, Callahan, Lazaro, Lemming, Roth. After each name, the warden said, should I check that one? At the end, I heard the voter ask, who else is there? The warden said, you already voted for seven. You can't vote for anyone anymore. She did not mention any of the other names. The warden said, okay, now school committee. The voter asked, no, I don't know anyone on the school committee. So the warden replied, are you all done then? The woman said, yes. There were voters... warden replied are you all done then the woman said yes there were voters that came in and were told that they were at the wrong polling place most of those they were told that they were supposed to be at the brooks some was told they could cast their vote but not put it in the machine it was put in the stack of others in a big manila envelope except one person went around and put it in the machine the others were directed to where they were supposed to vote at nine AM a woman who asked to cast her vote was told no she said she had to go to the book school the voter said that I can't get there they called Melissa who spoke on to the voter on the phone and she told her that she couldn't vote at the senior center there were about fifteen voters that came in and were told that they were inactive and were asked for an ID or some produced a picture ID with their address driver's license and others produced a credit card passport with just a name there were voters that did not have an ID and they let them vote they voted and those ballots were again put in a manila envelope and not in the machine I noted the name of a voter Nancy Vatari Vatari from Riverside Ave who came in very upset she had a mail-in ballot she said they never requested she never requested a mail-in ballot always votes in person and she wanted to vote in person as she always does they were told they told her to open the envelope and they were rude to her she showed them it was blank and they told her to fill it out and give it to the warden the voter filled it out went right over and put it in the machine and the workers were all standing in front of her preventing her from putting in the machine and she went around them and she put her vote right in the machine okay um so the warden had a manila envelope and she kept putting the ballots in and they were not individually labeled and then she kept on putting it in a binder or behind her on a chair this council should be very upset at the poor catty behavior of the warden the election workers and Melissa upon arrival the one told me that I was not allowed anywhere near the registration table I could only stand and I could not use one of the hundred vacant chairs to sit in I was shocked and I am a disabled disabled taxpaying property owner and I was standing in a building owned by taxpayers being told I could not sit in a chair that I a taxpayer paid for Melissa arrived gruffly and told me that I could only that I could only stand in the corner and that I could not use a chair table while outlet amenities she called the officer over to stand next to me registration ladies were checking in voters by last name they weren't calling the last name or the street address when I asked them to I was ignored when miss night arrived I asked to be closer to hear and they and they and asked if they were supposed to be calling out the names and addresses so I could hear Adam told me yes and spoke to the warden and told her the rules she got back on the phone again after after Adam left she told them to move even for told me to move even further away thirty feet from the registration table and I could not barely hear at all one of the attorneys for the caviolo campaign arrived told the warden who they were and moved me closer so I could observe and hear after that attorney left Melissa arrived at eleven thirty she reprimanded me loudly and she said she didn't care what Adam or the attorney or anyone else said that those were her rules and that they were all wrong the workers the ones and the ones were passing notes to each other Melissa came back with a male and female officer told me that if I didn't comply to escort me out the building I was shaken I was embarrassed I was unjustly bullied Melissa moved the table in front of me and put lunchboxes so I couldn't even see the registration machine so I am just asking as a taxpayer I am asking for a full recount to the vote to restore my faith in the integrity of the voting.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak I was just trying to we're gonna keep to five minutes because I know a lot of people want to speak and we have other issues tonight that a lot of people want to speak on as well so just yeah name and address.
Tiffany bear Fortinash Road I'm curious many of you appear have said that with all these things that have happened that you're pretty sure that the election would not be different the results how are you guys so sure I I don't get it seems like it was a big it seems like it was actually quite the big cluster F I'm not going to say the word and so it especially the mayoral election it was pretty damn close you know with all these mistakes this could easily gone differently so I say let's have a frigging mayoral election like something that this isn't right this needs to be fixed and not just talking either it needs to be like with with Mr scarpelli said they need to come up with a plan but then we need to have like dates you're going to finish this by then you're going to do this by then and someone gets like needs to be fired honestly because they didn't do their job and election integrity doesn't exist in Medford period we need to fix that thank you.
Good evening my my name is Anthony Dantonio twenty-four Hicks Avenue from everything I've read this evening it seems that this election was flawed I can't I can't understand that the council will accept a flawed election I you know who knows about the outcome whether it would be the same I don't think it would be I I don't trust this city the way it's run the last two elections okay we have good people running and probably good people get in okay but the thing is the damn thing was flawed it was fuba I mean I can't believe this you can't accept this election you have to go and do it again and I don't want to hear about it costs money because we have money available thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record please.
John Sousa three fifty-nine Winthrop Street so I was a poll watcher for the caviolo campaign on Tuesday a lot of you were talking about funding and money maybe the issue to solving some of these problems what I witnessed for about a three and a half hour period at the brook school was over fifty percent which was probably close to over a hundred and fifty voters at the time came in gave their first three letters of their first name first three letters of their last name which we were able to overcome that issue and make it work but more than fifty percent of them were told you requested a mail-in ballot you now need to go over to the warden's table you need to get cleared to come back and vote some of those people said never request the mail-in ballot some of those people said did request the mail-in ballot didn't fill it out didn't have time didn't understand the directions it's money it's money those are those are dollars spent to issue those ballots that weren't used in the correct form for one reason or another so if money is the problem this is an area where this council can look to potentially recoup some of the money necessary to fund these types of elections appropriately and the fact that I'm listening to this tonight is disgusting and I I'm like borderline speechless that this is actually a conversation taking place in the city I grew up in and love so this needs to get solved and I agree with everybody else there needs to be a clear definitive answer what the results of this election actually were and we can't just assume because assuming got us where we are today.
Thank you name and address for the record please.
Good evening everyone Sharon DSO one three O Circuit Road in Mass Haven, Metrot. I've been a resident of the city for many years and seen progress I've seen change new schools older buildings rerouting I just had an article published about the change in the road of upper governor's avenue and how it destroyed about forty homes property value like thieves in the night they came put them down claimed that we all got flyers nobody got a flyer anyway these are just some of the examples that go by us it just what's going to happen you know the next thing is going to happen we'll have another election like this but I won't.
I think you're accidentally touching the button there's a button just don't here you go oh oh stop touching it just hang on hang on once and then I'll tell you there you go okay nope once okay just touch okay put your once okay hand off hand off okay you're good you can't see the light.
Can you hear me now okay thank you sorry I'm president so people bring up things that are going on in the nation etcetera etcetera but this is like a mini nation right here and a big point of discussion is we should be getting some sort of thanks for our tax dollars people work very hard in campaigns they extend their time to come here on council school committee etcetera if I were to purchase a house and skipped or did something and never had my signature validated on a P and S form I not would not legally own that home I think I'm not a lawyer but I think I'm correct but I really agree with Mr Dantonio and one of the other speakers who came up there has to be something done about this the results of this election not even a recount I think I think the the election I hate to say it because I you know been here a very long time that it's just was not a legal election so you can take that into account and maybe you can go along the same steps one thing about the results and people said well you know then you can test the young results anyway it deems and behooves you yourselves because you may have even gained more votes yourselves and don't know it on the council in the school committee or some of you may not really have earned the seat yourselves thank you and good evening.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to oops sorry now I had a hand up on zoom but I think Eileen I saw your hand up but I forgot you over there for a little while raise your hand if you want to speak otherwise go to folks in person alright is there anyone else person who'd like to speak?
Good evening city councillors madam president Mr vice president Mr clerk I had the privilege and honor.
Sandy if you just sorry I know we all know you but just name and address for the record.
Sandra Gale Fulton Street.
Thank you.
I had the privilege of standing before this council to acquire an elections department a department that was going to go into the twenty-first century with the things that were put in place we should have gotten there I was approached last week by someone who said well you know this must make you feel really good no this doesn't this is a very sad thing our basic basic functioning right of letting our voice be heard through voting sounds to me like it was voter suppression and voter suppression should not be tolerated in the municipality of Medford across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or across the United States and if we don't stand up and demand answers it will continue to happen I respectfully acknowledge that counting votes or looking at the process may not change the outcome of the election but what you need is integrity and you need accountability you can't go through three federal elections coming up very shortly and not have some sort of accountability and the elections are not going to get easier they're going to get harder and without proper organization and proper planning and being able to work more than a thirty-five or forty-hour a week job you can't get it done it's just not possible and it shouldn't make anybody who is an elected official in this city feel good about anything so we need to make sure that the counts are accurate I appreciate your time and letting me say something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Eileen Lerner on zoom Eileen I will unmute you. We are Eileen's frozen or we're frozen I'm sure it'll come back at an opportune time uh name and address for the record we'll go to you.
Hi Melanie Trungali one sixteen one sixteen Florida Street and a recent candidate for the twenty twenty-three election just sitting here a couple of things that really stuck out at me is that there was listed probably ten to fifteen issues with the election from beginning to end four thousand ballots if I heard George Wright were not counted were not counted in public or don't know how they were counted you all said that there was a complicated process more complicated process because of the early voting and the mail-in ballots and each one of you said that election integrity was an issue and giving all those issues how can you sit here and say one hundred percent that the end result will not be impacted I've been in business for twenty years and whenever there is a breakdown in process there is usually an impact on the end now I'm not saying that those changes are going to be huge to make a difference in who won and who didn't win but there should be it there should be absolute one hundred percent proof that what happened or the counts were accurate so thank you thank you.
Eileen let's try this again it looks like it's I got kicked out of zoom so it looks like our connection's bad keep looking a little frozen so I don't have a lot of.
Can you hear me now?
Can hear you yeah it might help to.
Okay all right so I think it's a pleasure for once since I've lived in Medford that you know many people feel the same way that we're not divided we want to see a fair and free and safe and you know accessible election everybody wants to see that and there were some issues it doesn't seem like the people who are in the know think those issues were grave enough to hold another election and really if we could afford another election we probably would have enough money to have had a better result with the election to begin with because it seems like all the problems go back to what the all the problems are with the school committee with everything we don't have enough money and and even the mayor can't manufacture money I mean we have to get the money some way and that's the issue that needs to be resolved I don't think you know people are fallible they make mistakes but how could you not make a mistake when you're so understaffed and you have such a monumental job to do I mean I feel sorry for the people that had to do all this work you know and and didn't have enough help how is it possible it's not possible for the two people to do that job so it was inevitable that issues would arise and you know we have to have a staff that can do the job if we have a staff that can do the job we have to have money the whole problem the way I see it is not so much integrity because I feel like all the people that were involved have integrity and they tried to do the best they could and and it got messed up and yeah the city council and the people that live here we got to demand a better result but we also got to get the money to have a better result because I don't know how anything can change without more money thank you.
Thank you Eileen can we just get your address for the record?
Oh nine Adams Circle.
Thank you Eileen. Is there anyone else would like to speak?
Thank you Harry McGilvy four Piedmont Road I've been voting in this city since nineteen eighty-eight in every election I've worked polls for about twenty years. I've worked polls for about twenty years. My only question is, when did this become so difficult? I've never seen any, I've never seen problems like this. When did it become difficult? What changed? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? There's someone on Zoom. I cannot see them because my internet is not working. Okay. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Kelly Catallo, twenty-three Salem Street. I was a candidate in the 2021 election, and there was a lot of problems back then. And I was told by this city hall that it would never happen again and that the problems would end. We're hearing that there's four thousand ballots that were not counted in public. I was a poll worker for the Caraballo campaign. I saw a lot of things that if any of these councilors were sitting in the room, they would have stopped. Are we just going to kick it forward again? Are you going to kick it forward again to next year and say, we hope it doesn't happen again? You had a voter stand here. Your constituent who asked you, let's just recount the vote, let's just do it, and let's prove to Medford that integrity in the vote exists in Medford. I challenge you to do it. I challenge any candidate that was on the card to call for recount. Do it by hand. Let's prove to the voters that their election has integrity. Right now, as a voter in America, I don't know if I'll ever vote again. It's really sad, because you know what? I love this city. I love this city more than most people. And it's sad that this is where it happens, four hundred years after the day that this city was born. And I hope that you all bring it to an end, and you prove to the voters that they can still believe in Medford. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Charles Balboni. I'm a Medford resident. I've lived in this city for approximately fifteen to sixteen years. In 2005, I was a lieutenant colonel in Afghanistan, defending the United States, defending our country. And one of my jobs was to help oversee the elections of the Afghan government. And let me just say, they did a fine, better job at it than I saw the other day. Every one of you have been reelected to your position, and it's in your personal and professional and financial interest not to hold another election. All of you should be ashamed. This vote, this election was an absolute failure. And to accept it is to say that you condone failure in the election and the process that that flag is supposed to represent. And I'm asking all of you today to stand up and call for another election. If you don't, I understand. Every one of you has a personal and financial interest to keep this election as, as it is right now, settled.
Rick, Rick lost an election, she's not running again. So it's not all of us have a personal financial interest.
Some of you do.
Okay, so not all of us. All right, thank you.
Okay. With that, thank you very much for hearing my complaint.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? We have a motion, we have an amendment. Well, we need, I need a motion on the original paper that's been amended by Counselor Scarpelli and Counselor Singh.
Motion approved as amended.
Motion from Vice Affairs to approve as amended by Counselor Scarpelli and Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Singh. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Behrs.
Yes.
Counselor Caraballo. Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight. Counselor Knight.
Awesome.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh. President Morrell.
Yes. Six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one absent, the motion passes. We have a motion to revert back to regular order of business. A motion of Counselor Collins to revert back to regular order of business, seconded by Vice Affairs. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hang on.
When you're ready. There was a motion, we, both papers were combined, so it was two three dash four five one and two three dash four five oh, asking for the, on the street, the vote. To be resolved by the Medford City Council, the Elections Commission and Election Manager provide report to the council listing any and all issues or procedural errors that occurred during the administration of the 2023 year election. To be further resolved, the report includes specific responses to the misprinting of ballots and inaccurate instruction sheets provided to voters with mail ballots.
Let me shorten this up.
You can interrupt her.
I'm, I'm repeating it. I'm repeating, you asked me to repeat it, I'm repeating it back. Trains that provide incorrect information to poll wardens and workers, and also the paper has been disposed of, so I'm reading it back as a courtesy. There's no more public comment on this paper. The paper's been disposed of, so I'm reading it back as a courtesy. I'm reading it back as a courtesy. You're welcome to say to public participation at the end of the meeting, but I'm reading this back as a courtesy. There's no more public comment on this paper. It's been disposed of because we voted on it.
So voter integrity means nothing?
As I said.
Thank you.
I'll continue reading because you asked for it. Voters bringing materials to assist them in the voting booth and persistent issues with the counting of ballots in a timely manner and release of incomplete unofficial election results to the public. Be it further resolved that the mayor provide the council with a supplemental appropriation request for a start full-time staffing levels in the Elections Department, and then that was combined with Counselor Scarpelli's paper that said be it resolved the election coordinator report back to the city council with a detailed report and findings detailing the municipal election, which includes but is not limited to absentee ballots, polling rules and regulations, complaints and malfunctions. Scarpelli amended to ask for elections to direct the commissioner, can't read my own writing, to explain in detail. Can you read that amendment?
Amendment about sending a letter to the Secretary of State.
Yeah, sorry, that was a letter, yeah. That was a letter, which was sent to the Secretary of State, and then Counselor Singh, further amended to ask for specific details related to funding and staffing related to the challenges. And that's what was voted on and approved, six, zero, one absent. But a motion from.
Counselor, I believe it was Counselor Singh to revert with the second of Counselor Behrs.
Counselor Singh, seconded by Vice Behrs to revert to regular order of business. And now, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Yes.
Counselor Knight. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Singh.
Yes.
Yes. Six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one absent, motion passes, according to regular order of business. Page, page one. Page two. Two three dash four one one, notice of a public hearing, Medford City Council, chapter ninety-four, zoning. The Medford City Council will conduct a public hearing on November fourteenth, 2023, at seven PM in the Medford City Council Chamber on the second floor of Medford City Hall, eighty-five George P. Hasse Drive, Medford, Mass., oh two one five five, and via Zoom remote video conferencing relative to paper two three dash four one one, also known as paper two three dash four oh seven, a petition by the Medford Housing Authority to amend zoning map city of Medford, Mass. dated April thirteenth, nineteen sixty-five as reference in Medford zoning ordinance, chapter ninety-four dash two dot two. The amendment proposes to change the zoning district designation of the property of one through twenty Walk Lane Court as depicted on sheets one through six of the plans entitled ALTA NSPS Land Title Survey, prepared by Fasson O'Neill and dated February sixth, 2022, from apartment one zoning district to a planned development district which would have a new development standard per Medford zoning ordinance, chapter ninety-four dash nine dot two dot three. A Zoom link for this meeting will be posted no later than November tenth, 2023. For additional information, aids and accommodations, call the Medford City Clerk's office at seven eight one three nine three two four two five, TDD seven eight one three nine three two five one six. The full materials of the amendment can be viewed in the office of the City Clerk, Medford City Hall, room one oh three, or on the city's website at medfordma.org/departments/planning-development-sustainability by clicking on current CD board filings, advertised in the Medford Transcript in Summer Journal, September fourteenth and twenty-first, 2023, by order of the Medford City Clerk, signed Adam L. Herdaby's, City Clerk. We do have the petitioner here, just for an update on this process. This has been many months of public meetings. I think we have had a number of committees of the whole on this, some by statute that we had to have, some we just had as informational. This was brought to the council earlier. This was referred out to the CD board, and their recommendation was, I believe it was five zero, I can pull it up, paper is five zero, recommend the approval. So yeah, what is before us tonight is zoning. I believe Director Hunt, she's not here, it's Danielle. Oh, there you are. If you want to just remind us, so the planned development district is a, is a process that was added when we did the zoning recertification, that was passed last March, so it's a relatively new process. So if Director Hunt can give us a brief reminder of the steps of this process, then I think we can go to the petitioner. And then, I know a lot of folks want to speak on this as well, so we'll go with Director Hunt first.
Thank you, Madam President. Alicia Hunt, Director of Planning, Development and Sustainability for the city. I'm here tonight with Senior Planner Danielle Evans. So this is a method that is relatively new, but it's gone through the city council once before about how we change zoning for a specific planned development district, for a specific location when presented with a project that makes sense to the city, makes sense within our plans. So we've submitted from the CD board actually a memo that talks about the various climate action and adaptation plan, comprehensive plan, the housing preserve, the housing, sorry, production plan, and how this, that they considered all of those in their recommendation that this fits with us. At this time, this is, was, had its original referral from this board, which was a required referral to the CD board for recommendation. CD board conducted a public hearing. You have a memo that Senior Planner Danielle Evans drafted for you about the recommendations, and she's here if you wanted her to speak to that or to more detail about what the Community Development Board discussed at that meeting, or I can as well. At this time, if you were to approve this, this would be for the zoning. The next step would be that the housing, sorry, the housing authority, I apologize, you had a long meeting, but I sat in a three-hour traffic commission meeting before, immediately before this, so I, my brain is also catching up. So the, the housing authority would still need to apply for a special permit for the construction of these projects, and during that time would go through a site plan review process. So I will point out that there are a number of concerns around things like traffic, circulation and trees, et cetera. Those are items that are addressed during site plan review and would be thoroughly vetted at that time. I'm not saying you shouldn't or can't consider those, but this is really about the height, the density, the, this is about the zoning of this, and that those details, like zoning, is not really addressed trees, but site plan review does and access. So that's where we stand with this this evening. There are a number of members of the housing authority team here tonight to speak to you about this, unless you have any other questions about the process. And Danielle and I are here both to speak to the process and to the CD board's considerations during their public meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councilors at this time? I think just, I'm going to, Counselor Scarpelli, just quickly, just so we, I think, just because this is a public hearing, so we have to run a specific way, I think we'll take questions from councilors if we have it this time. We'll go to the petitioner, any additional questions? Then we open up the public hearing. I know there's lots of folks who want to speak. That is the time to speak either in favor or opposition. I know sometimes there is some nuance in between, but take a, take a time so we can, we can lodge your comments, and then we will see if we have a motion for a vote, so just so folks are, know the process we're going to go through. Counselor Scarpelli, do you have a question for right now?
Yeah, I think the biggest concern that I have is, as we're talking, as we're seeing some, some of the new changes we're seeing and some of the development that we're seeing, one constant comes back to me from, from neighbors and residents that they, they shared what I felt was an issue, is that as we're moving forward, these zoning changes, we see that they're important, we see that they can be successful. What we don't have, though, is proper notification when we do certain, do certain jobs in our community. I don't think we do a very good job informing our constituents of projects that are coming about. I'll use Mr. Gav as an example. That evening, we talked about a building that sounds great, but I opposed it for the fact that it, it, right now, it's a unicorn, and I didn't get any answer from the administration of what the vision is for that area. No different than what's happening over at the old Kiss one oh eight site at the T Building, at the, in Wellington, that the building's being raised and we still have no vision. Now, that's very close to having, you know, two gateways of our community. And I think that moving forward to any more zoning is, is, to me, is a slippery slope for the fact that we're not letting our constituents know. There are some projects that organizations, I'll give you an example with our housing. There have been multiple meetings, multiple neighbors, opportunities for people to speak on different projects. I don't think we see that meant, too often, when it comes to some of these positions and some of these, these, these projects. And I tell you, I, I think when we talked about putting together the zoning study and having that, bring that team in that will go neighborhood to neighborhood, remember we talked about that, and having, bringing, getting the idea of the residents or what people want Medford to look like? It seems like we forgot that. We're not doing that anymore. That's been put in the back burner. Well, I don't, well, we haven't done anything, and we're, we're coming up with new zoning changes, and we're saying, well, we could do this now because this might work. But in totality, we still don't have a plan, and we still aren't including all of our residents. So, and I think that's a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli. Do you, are you able to speak to the notification for this? I, I don't want to misspeak. So there's a notification process for public hearings, but I don't want to misspeak to it, do you know? Well, good evening. I'm Danielle Evans, Senior Planner. Are you talking about the notification for the project in general or for the rezoning?
I, I think for any projects. I mean, for anything that's going on in the city. Again, phone calls, I got forty-five phone calls, it's something we're going to talk about later. So I think that.
This, this actual, this project's been, when the CPC and then when your honorable body approved the funding for CPA funds, one of the conditions that the CPC placed on it is that there be a very robust public input process, and they built that into their budget for multiple, multiple meetings. I went to several of them, you know, on my own time in the evening to see what was going on there. They had some for residents, some for the butters. Gabe could, you know, could speak to how many there were, I didn't make it to all of them. But for that, there were many, many. We didn't do mailings for this one, for this site plan review we do. Yeah, for site plan review and for the special permit is when all of the butters are noticed, but for zoning change, it's, you know, two ads run the paper, you post the public hearing notice, and it goes to, there's a, there's a list of different bodies that it goes to. And I might add, there are a lot of people who have been to public meetings of this and who are here this evening to speak on this. So in my impression, they must have heard about this, so the public notification must be working because people know about this. Every time they call you upset about something we're doing, it actually indicates that they know about it, so.
And I, what I'll do is, I'll ask, what I'll do is, I'll ask a request, because I think what's getting out, because if you ask, there's a demographic that, if you look at all the surveys, and there's a demographic that gets the information, and it seems to be one demographic. There's a lot of people, if you ask the common person in this room that's not involved with this, they've never heard anything about this, because the message is getting out to the people that it seems like that are pinpointed to direct, direct mailers or, or groups. So that, that's the problem, and that just not, I'm not, when I say this project, I'm saying as a whole. I'm having, I'm having calls from, as a whole, when we're talking about different surveys and things being done around the community, and, and getting, your office getting back to people and saying, oh, no, we, we sent it out and. back to people and saying, oh, no, we, we sent it out, and, you know, there are times that I'm in those same neighborhoods, I didn't get anything, I'm a city councillor. So that, that, I can't, I can't not listen or bring forth what my constituents are bringing to me.
Thank you. And anytime any of your constituents have suggestions about better ways that we can notify short of us knocking on everybody's door-
Sure.
I, we are very open to where else can, how else can we put the word about these, where else can we, and I will mention that paper mailing the entire city costs about eighteen thousand dollars, so-
Let's talk about what we talked about.
Yep.
Something that we were very excited about is hiring that zoning team-
Yes.
And then bringing our vision of our development, our growth in our community, remember, going neighborhood to neighborhood, involving, involving everyone, right? Having community meetings-
We can't afford that. We can't afford that. I know you would really like us to do it that way, but we're going to have to have more than a hundred thousand dollars to do it. Like, it's, it's, that's a very expensive-
This council requested it. This council, it's not us, this council's requested it.
Thank you. At this point, we want to go to the petitioner unless there's any other. Gabriel, you're going to have your part. And just briefly, just gave name and address for the record.
Yep. I'm Gabe Chicarrello, I'm the Director of Modernization and Procurement with the Medford Housing Authority, and I'm here to present the redevelopment of Walklin Court. Can I may able to share?
Yeah, can you make, Gabe, I assume it's your teacher, Chicarrello? That's you?
Yes.
The co-host.
Let's see the screen now. So we have a very deep, dedicated, mission-driven team here with us. Jeff Driscoll's our Executive Director. We are using the Cambridge Housing Authority as a development consultant and also an owner's project manager when we come to construction. Our council is Nolan Sheehan Patton, and Hannah Kilson is here with me tonight, she's going to assist me as we get further into the presentation. Our architect is Dietz and Company, and Danny Gerpelitisha is here representing Dietz, and our civil engineer is Fasson O'Neil, they are here, and our traffic engineer performing the traffic studies, niche engineering. So through this presentation, just going to give you a brief overview of the Walklin Court development, then I'm going to turn it over to Hannah to discuss the P D D process and our requesting zoning amendment. So Walklin Court is currently, it's a hundred forty-four units of state-aided public housing for low-income seniors and disabled households. All the units are deeply affordable with our residents' rents calculated thirty percent of their income. Historically and to date, Walklin Court has not received sufficient operating subsidy to address its physical needs. It was built in nineteen sixty-three and suffers from two key deficiencies. There's some pictures to the right of just your typical existing conditions within the buildings, and one of the biggest things is that it lacks accessibility features for seniors and disabled households as they're two-story walk-up garden flat-style buildings with no elevators. So half of our senior disabled residents need to access stairs to get to their units. This is a bird's-eye view of the Walklin Court development. As you can see, it has some, it's bordered and adjacent to some interesting properties. To the west, it's a commercial site with Whole Foods and Starbucks. To the south, we have kind of a more industrial commercial space with Elizabeth Grady, their mid-rise style buildings, commercial office space and lab space. To the north, there's a couple residential homes, and then the Mystic River Reservation amenity. And to the east is your typical Medford two-family and single-family homes. To the top right here, this is a picture to the entrance of Walklin Court from Auburn Street looking down towards the Auburn-North Street intersection. This next picture to the bottom is from the North Street Bridge looking west. You can see across the train tracks, there's a mid-rise commercial-type buildings, and to the right, you can see our two-story walk-up garden flat buildings. And to the top left is to the west of our property that shows the Whole Foods building, the Whole Foods parking lot. The picture to the right here is what the proposed redevelopment we hope to look like, and this is an elevated view from around the intersection of North Street and Auburn Street. There's, we're proposing five structures on the site. Three of them to the north of the site and east of the site are two-story townhouse buildings. To the west of the site, we're proposing a four-story family mid-rise building. Three of those stories would be residential, and the ground floor would be podium parking and a couple common area spaces. And then scaling up towards the south of the site, where the adjacency is mid-rise buildings, we're looking to put a six-story elderly-disabled build, elevator building with podium parking on the first floor, and then five stories of residential units. So the goals of the redevelopment is, number one, is to provide high-quality, accessible and deeply affordable units to our existing hundred forty-four units that are on site, but we're also looking to build ninety-four net new deeply affordable units within that site. And fifty-four of those would be elderly-disabled units, and forty of those would be family units. We're looking to improve the resiliency and sustainability to this site, and then improve the site's connection to the surrounding neighborhood. The site is existing, has a decent connection to the neighborhood, it's used a lot as a walk-through for people coming from Boston Ave to connect to Whole Foods, and we are looking to improve upon that with this new design. And the redevelopment of Walklin Court is a local priority, so the replacement of the hundred forty-four units and construction of new units is included in the fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-five City of Medford's Housing Production Plan as a strategy to help meet the city's housing goals. And again, all units during redevelopment, after development, would remain deeply affordable with residents' rents limited to thirty percent of their income. To the left here is just a sketch of the site plan showing the senior mid-rise building is a larger building A, then there's the smaller mid-rise family building is building B, and then the three townhouse buildings, which would be C, D, and E. And to the right here, the top-right picture is a rendering of what the proposed dedicated senior outdoor space would look like, where they currently at Walklin Court have a really nice community garden, we look to incorporate that, has a really nice dedicated senior space. And the bottom picture to the right is what the site would look like coming in off of Auburn Street entering Walklin Court. So to the east, you have the townhouse-type buildings. To the west, you'd have the family mid-rise, and straight down to the south would be the senior mid-rise building. So an overview of what we've done during the resident and neighborhood engagement process. So we've had a very active and well-attended resident neighborhood engagement process. At the time of submitting this P D D application, we'd held seven resident meetings, we held five full community meetings. Before we started the full community process, we also held a meeting with the director butters to Walklin Court. This is just a map of what the legal notifications in the yellow, we were legally had to mail out notifications within four hundred feet, but we also flyered for every meeting within that area, and we went past that area out to West Street, Lyman Ave, and Boston Ave. We also posted notices in, you know, within and around the Walklin Court site. The MHA has met with a variety of city departments, almost all city departments now, including the Fire Department, Building Department, and D P W. And, and we've also had, you know, the public meetings for the Community Preservation Act funding that we've submitted for. During the resident and community engagement process, these were some of the key topics that came out, came up were density and height, and increasing, I just got to block this, I can't see this real quick, sorry. Increasing the number of affordable housing at Walklin Court, again, is identified as a strategy in the city's fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-five Housing Production Plan. And the ninety-four net new units is expected to increase the number of actual residents on site by about a hundred and one percent. Not the number of units, but the number of residents on site by about a hundred and one percent. And the senior mid-rise, again, is a five-story building with, senior mid-rise, five stories living space, and then the covered podium parking on the ground floor. A key goal of this project, again, is to provide elevator access to seniors and disabled residents and also families in the mid-rise building. There is a high need for handicap-accessible family housing. And we're trying to work efficient building footprints with the height to allow for more programmable interior space and more kind of accessible, usable, open space on the site. And again, the building types reflect, try to reflect the adjacency around the site to the proximity, you know, proximity and adjacency to the buildings. One of the questions that has come up is the proximity to the trains, to the commuter rail line. And the site and facade is designed to meet HUD noise requirements using high-performance windows and insulation. We've onboarded an acoustical engineer that will stay on the project team during design development, during construction. And actually, the noise on the site currently will be greatly improved from its current situation, and all the new buildings will have mechanical ventilation installed and have centralized heating and cooling. And there's, there's many examples of comparable development going on adjacent to railroad tracks, especially with, you know, with market rate housing, mid-rise buildings being built along Boston Ave and Somerville. There's been a question about having an access road through the site. We're looking, right now, there's two entry points to get into, there's two separate entry points again to Walklin Court, and we're looking to make it through street. And the act, that access road would provide residents and visitors access to all of the buildings within the site. It would ensure emergency access, and it's been reviewed and recommended by the Fire Department. And of course, it would be designed to ensure pedestrian safety with traffic calming measures, and the parking amount is, the parking that we have planned is based on usage for low-income seniors and families, and the parking need will be met on site. Residents living within the Walklin Court development would not have to go and park outside of the development. We've had the traffic survey done by niche engineering, it's determined that no traffic mitigation measures will be warranted. And then environmental issues. We've conducted a phase one and phase two environmental site assessment. Any asbestos remediation and soil removal would meet state and federal requirements, and all construction activities will be monitored to ensure that hazardous materials are properly handled. And no environmental impact statement is required because no Mass Environmental Protection Act thresholds have been exceeded or are exceeded. I'm going to turn it over to Hannah.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Kilson. I'm a partner at the law firm of Nolan Sheehan Patton, eighty-four State Street in Boston. Thank you, Madam President and councillors, this evening. I want to walk through with you the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. What is being proposed this evening by Medford Housing Authority is to adopt what we are calling the P D D three amendment, which would create a planned residential development district within Medford. Gabe, I'm going to let you. So Gabe had, if you can go back, so first of all, just like, but this planned development district would require an amendment of the zoning map, and it would require an amendment of the zoning map to situate this parcel, as we noted, on the southeast portion of this parcel is bordered by North Street. The south portion of the parcel is bordered by an industrial district, which on across the railroad tracks sits the Tufts Engineering Education and Outreach Program. To the west of the parcel will sit the commercial district, which is currently occupied by Whole Foods Market, and then towards the north and the northeast is an apartment one district, which as was noted, would pass a single-family homes and two-family homes. And so the first portion is to amend the zoning map to allow a P D D three district in this area. The zoning amendment under the P D D three contains certain general provisions that relate to special permit process, the site plan process, which will occur through the Community Development Board, and then the special permit granted authority is this council here. We are also proposing that the special permit that we would obtain through this council would also be sufficient to qualify for the inclusionary housing provision special permit that's currently required under the zoning ordinance. The permitted uses for the project, Gabriel, you straight that thing, the permitted uses for the project, you can see here up on the screen, this site will only have two types of permitted uses. One will be residential uses, and the other will be general office uses. The proposed amendment would make the uses as of right detached family dwellings, attached single-family dwellings, detached two-family dwellings, and multiple dwelling Class A, multiple dwelling Class B, and senior housing independent living. Those uses would be permitted as of right, whereas a special permit would be required from this city council for dormitory, lodging, boarding houses, and for any other type of senior facility. Right now on the site, as we noted, this site has been developed since nineteen sixty-three as a multifamily housing with nine buildings on the site, but the multiple dwelling houses greater than at seventy-five or six stories is not permitted as of right. And so that is one element of use that would, is needed in order for the development that's being proposed for Medford Housing Authority to be available. The next component of the proposed amendment is dimensional. So the proposed amendment would allow for more than one principal structure on the site, similar to what's exist currently. It would provide that each of those structures on the site would have to be located at least fifteen feet from, from another principal structure, which is similar to the current requirement under the existing zoning code. The dimensional standards that we are proposing here for this P D D are really consistent with what we think is both the intent of the P D D, which is to allow kind of flexibility for redevelopment of the Walklin Court site in order to achieve a goal that clearly the city has articulated in a number of its planning documents, which is to create more affordable housing, both for senior and disabled residents of Medford, but also for families. So the lot configuration that we would propose here for any lot that's located in the P D D three, it would have minimum frontage of thirty-five feet, it would have minimum lot width of thirty-five feet, and it would have a minimum lot depth of seventy-five feet. The minimum lot area would be ten thousand square feet, and we would allow for a dwelling unit density of one unit per seven hundred and fifty square feet. So that expresses that we aren't looking to create a development density to achieve the objectives of more affordable housing available in the community. Maximum lot coverage, sorry, I can't see the screen from there, my glasses, my eyesight's not good enough to follow that. The maximum lot coverage is thirty-five percent. Under current zoning, it's thirty percent. Landscape and usable open space, we are proposing in our amendment that that be ten percent of the gross floor area. This space requirement would allow development density, again, that we think is consistent with the City of Medford's plan for this site, and would enable us to build, help the City of Medford achieve its goal of six hundred affordable housings- of Medford achieve its goal of 600 affordable housings in units in fiscal year 2025. If the proposed redevelopment of Walklin Court was allowed by special permit, the open space that we're proposing is in fact more accessible and more usable than the existing open space. Currently, the landscaped open space here is 10%, and the current requirement for usable open space is 25%. Setbacks. The setbacks that we are proposing on the site is front yard of 15 feet, side yard of 10 feet, and rear yard of 15 feet. The, given the typography, however, on North Street, the PDD amendment actually requires no setback for the parking spaces located in the front yard of any lot in the PDD-3 district. And that is consistent with the current circumstances of parking at the site. Maximum height and stories, this, in this PDD-3, the maximum height and stories really is dependent on the use, the residential use. Here, where our intentions are multifamily and single-family attached, the maximum height would be 75 feet for multiple family housing in six stories, or it would be 35 feet in three stories for attached single-family dwellings. Next would be our parking. The parking here, the ratio of parking would be one parking space for every two units, which is a parking space ratio that the underlying zoning currently would permit at the site for affordable housing use development. That's, I think, that'd be great. And so, I think with that, I guess the last thing to mention, it's, maybe it's a less substantive provision, but is the PDD amendment allows for screening of mechanical equipment. And we always recognize that that is a concern to minimize the visibility of mechanical equipment on-site and from the streets and from neighboring parcels. So, one of the requirements for the project will to, under the PDD, is to make sure there's adequate screening of such mechanical equipment. Thank you very much. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the amendment, but this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Adriana Kilson. This cover everything from the MHA.
Somewhere.
Great. Do we have questions from counselors at this time? Counselor, are we all, do you have questions for you? Okay. So, as this is a public hearing, we do have to open up the public hearing. So, I'm gonna open up, call for people who want to speak in favor of the position before us, the zoning change before us, and then I will call for people who want to speak in opposition of the zoning change before us. Lost my train of thought on something else.
Should I stop sharing now?
Yeah, that would be helpful. Oh, no, what I wanted to say is also, there's been a number of folks that also submitted their opinion via email that the clerk will add to the report as well. So, as this is a public hearing, if there is anyone who would like to speak in favor of the paper before us, this is the zoning change before us that the MHA just presented on, please come up to the mic. You can literally just say yes, you can say a little bit more, but just name an address for the record, please, as you come up.
Roberta Cameron, 12 North Street. And yes, I'm in favor of this development. And if I may say a little bit more, I am a member of the Community Preservation Committee, and we very strongly supported this development because we feel that it is really critical for improving the quality of life for the public housing residents at Walklin Court. And we think that the process that was required for the public input during the conceptual planning stage has really helped to create a project that fits well in the neighborhood. And I think that this zoning is a very appropriate way of being able to bring that plan to fruition. So, thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
William Navarre, 108 Medford Street, Apartment 1B. I appear to ask that you do approve this zoning amendment. The Medford Housing Authority has got grant money available to build more and better deeply affordable housing at Walklin Court. Everybody supports affordable housing. Council needs to say yes to this zoning amendment so the housing gets built, so that MHA can access that money and build the housing that our community needs. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Kate on Zoom, and then I'll come back to you. Kate, I will unmute you.
And then just keep it running. Yes, we can hit it. Canal Street, Number 9, Medford. I am a public housing resident with physical and other disabilities, and I am very strongly in favor of this. It is desperately needed. One out of every 10 COVID cases, for example, will lead to long COVID, which means that more people are going to be disabled than ever in the coming years. People really, really need this. We deserve to live in as nice housing as anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll go back in person, I'll get you back to Zoom. Name and address for the record, please.
Mark Curtis, 89 Trancroft Street, Medford. It's good evening. This proposed zoning change makes possible a deeply needed and truly transformative redevelopment project. We all know that Walklin Court is outdated, in truly bad condition. And what the Medford Housing Authority, our Medford Housing Authority, is proposing here is an attractive, multi-generational community that will provide brand-new apartments for existing residents, as well as new deeply affordable housing for families. And I think this project provides more new deeply affordable housing at one time because of this zoning change than we have seen in Medford in many years. I just want to commend the Housing Authority for the process that they've gone through. I think that this is a very well-designed and thoughtful project. It's bringing an impressive amount of federal and state funds to complement the city funds that are going into the project. And I strongly encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alex on Zoom. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Alex Lussenhop, 30 Wright Avenue, Medford. And I would just like to co-sign everything everyone has said before me and add that I'm strongly in favor of this project. This is a kind of opportunity we never get in Medford to develop this type of deeply affordable housing, this type of accessible housing, this type of housing for families. It's just, it's such a rare opportunity and you can't waste it. And our public housing residents deserve dignity, they deserve, you know, stable, accessible, attractive housing, just like any of us. And this is, I would urge the council to vote in favor to bring this zoning amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this paper, either in person or on Zoom?
Roseberry Portrait of 78 Orchard Street in Medford. I don't live that far from the development. I've been involved with the development for many years, starting as a teenager, and now into my adulthood, I do a lot of things for a lot of the residents there. Unfortunately, I know there is opposition, but to me, if we can put more people that don't have adequate housing into an adequate housing, that has an elevator, which none of the buildings in Walklin Court right now have, and some of those residents now that live there, I know personally, are a big disadvantage because they can't walk up the stairs, they can't even walk over to Whole Foods. They depend on people to come in and help them as much as possible. I'm one of them. I have some of the residents that call me saying I need groceries, and I'll definitely go over and I'll do it for them. I've watched people come and go out of that development, I've watched it grow, and now it's falling apart. And they really definitely need this building to be able to live freely and hopefully be able to get out again and do what they need to do. You know, it's sad that they have to stay in their houses. That causes more depression, and to me, that's a health issue, and that costs us as taxpayers more money because we have to pay for those disabilities to get readjusted, and it's not fair to them. There were a couple of residents here that needed to go home, that wanted to speak, and that's basically what they were gonna say. And I'm just here to relay their message as well as mine. I've watched a lot of people come and go, and it's sad, but we really need to let these people have a good life. We, as individuals, have a good life in our homes or in our neighborhoods, and we've watched developments go up and down, but this would give many, many people an enjoyable place to live and let them enjoy their freedom again. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Susan on Zoom. Susan, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Susan Gerard. I live at 26 Farragut Ave., Medford. I don't live near Walklin. Many years ago, I tutored a Russian immigrant who had pancreatic cancer, who lived in Walklin Court, and she could not handle the stairs. She had to move out. Luckily, she was able to find another senior housing unit to live in that had elevators, but others were not so lucky, I think. I also, you know, just want to say, I've had many friends in Medford who are seniors who needed this kind of affordable housing, but the lists are, I think, two or three years-long waiting lists. And this, I've lived in Medford for 42 years, and I've never seen a truly affordable housing project like Walklin Court in the 42 years really being built. And I think this is just an amazing opportunity. I know there is some criticisms, and there always will be of anything that gets built, but to me, this is a beautiful chance for people to have decent homes to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, either on Zoom or in person, who would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, this portion of the public hearing is closed. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please come up to the mic or raise your hand on Zoom. Who would like to speak in opposition of the zoning change? Who would change? Sure, and you, yeah, you can, whenever you're ready. Yeah, you could just get in line when you're ready. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Peggy Zisk, and I live in Tanushara. And I'm not really against, but I do want to point out a couple of details that Walklin Court is a little dense. I looked, I went into the Planning Commission and looked at the plans, because people said that it's the same height as the building on the north side, which is the commercial buildings. But if you go and look at those buildings, they're four stories. These are six, which means that the units inside will only be seven-foot ceilings after you take out for the plumbing and the false ceilings. If anyone has ever lived in public housing or worked in public housing, that's really uncomfortable living, it's a little bit depressing. The buildings that they have proposed for the elderly is pretty long hallways and very short ceilings. And if you've ever lived in an elderly housing building, or visited anyone, your grandparents, your parents, they're not very exciting places because they don't have a lot of energy. So, isolating people in a community and doubling the density is going to bring down the level, quality of life for people. They're gonna have air conditioning, they're gonna love that. I've already talked to some people in that building, they think it's great. They're gonna have better heating, they're gonna have elevators. Great. They're also gonna have twice as many people. If you look at any housing project from Chicago to Somerville, they don't work. They become, eventually, over the years, people get stuck for generations in low-income housing. People who can move out do move out, and people who can't stay, and the quality of life is lower. So, it's great, we should build elderly housing, for sure. Should you pack the density in twice as number of people into those buildings? No. So, you shouldn't, it's fine to rezone it if you want to rezone it, but as you said before, I don't think there's really a plan. This is more a response to an opportunity. I'm not sure Medford has a plan. We have squandered quite a few opportunities down by the river, where there was lots of opportunity for housing, and to incorporate low-income housing with middle-income and high-income housing, and it's gone. The buildings are beautiful, but wealthy people live there. And so, you can, I discourage you from zone, rezoning a parcel just to fix a project and squeeze as many low-income people as possible into a very concentrated neighborhood. And currently, the plan that they have is turning what's kind of a nice green space, if you walk around in there, to purely concrete streets with lots of parking and very little green. Even though they said 10%, it's, it's very unattractive plans. I don't know if anyone's looked at the plans. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I'm gonna go to, I know we had someone here, if you wanna come, and then I'll go to Diane on Zoom, we'll go in person first. Just name and address for the record, please.
Angela Murphy, 16 Carding Street. I've been on Carding Street 67 years. I've been there when Walklin Court was built, as a beautiful suburban senior community. As my, as the previous speaker said, I won't want to recommend that this zoning be disapproved, the change, because of all the reasons she stated, which I have written down, the same reasons. The quality of life for the residents that the buildings for the seniors is proposed for, I don't believe will be enhanced. They're gonna be abutting a railroad commuter train track. The back apartments will face, if you're housebound, look out your window, and all you will see is train tracks and a building overshadowing yours, which will cause sunlight to be limited because it's gonna be higher elevation than your six-story building. You're condensing, again, too many people into the site, you're eliminating a lot of green space that was there. I think, while yes, there is a definite need for low-income housing, senior housing, disabled housing, I, as a 72-year-old senior, would not want to live there. I would not want my autistic grandson to move into a disabled housing there in this proposal. I would not want my disabled sister, who's in a wheelchair, to live in this complex. I am not against building a senior housing project, not a project, a community. I call it a community because this, to me, is a project. It's not a community. I would not oppose building something there, scaling down the six-story buildings, reconfiguring the design so that the buildings are not horizontal along the track but perpendicular, so that the steel wells, windows will face the unsightly view, have more green space, the community gardens, they wanna relocate to an area of the complex that is not fit for growing things. So, nothing's gonna grow, they're gonna take down mature trees. And as she said, our previous speaker, the green space is gonna be limited. It's not gonna be a community, it's going to be a project. And our quality of life for those residents they proposed for will not be enhanced. And yes, I think Medford should build something there. Yes, I loved Walklin Court when it was built, I still love going there and seeing it and walking through it. And I, one day, thought when my house passed on to my children, I may live in Walklin Court, but now I would not if this proposal goes through. Let's find a plan that Medford can build on that site, and I challenge every counselor here to come down to that site and look at that site and see what they're proposing, and see how congested it's gonna be, and see what's gonna do to the surrounding neighbors and the community that it's going to be integral. to do to the surrounding neighbors and the community that it's going to be integrated into and everything. Parking's going to overflow onto streets which is already crowded. And residents coming and going, visitors, health aides, meals on wheels, people, deliveries, it's going to be nonstop. We have one-way streets, we have bad traffic from Route 16 already. Cars speed down past the park on Lyman and Carding because they're going the wrong way, and they want to hit Winter Street before they hit another car coming down. I can't tell you how many times I almost got hit coming out of my old driveway. So 67 years I've lived in that community. This, I think, would be a shame to build this particular proposal. I think rethink other proposals. And number, another thing I want to say is, all the public meetings, all the notices, I live on Carding Street, I don't live within the 400 radius they are obligated to inform, but I never, never once informed of anything going on there. If it wasn't for a neighbor of mine, I would not know. And at one public meeting, I went to Walkling Court, I was verbally berated by the complex manager while the housing authority person stood there and let her berate me, try to intimidate me and stop me from asking questions. As you can see, I'm nervous now talking here, but I'm not a dumb old woman. I know what's just there, and I think everybody should go down there and double-check what they wanted to do to this community. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Diane on Zoom, and then I'll come back. Diane, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Diane McKenny, 29 North Street. I'm a co-owner of the home directly abutting the proposal. I'm with everybody that, you know, Medford needs to have affordable housing for disabled, for the elderly, and I'm not against that in any way, shape, or form. I'm strictly against the size and the scope of this project. You've got a huge six-story building going in the middle of a neighborhood of single, double, you know, double-floor homes. There's going to be immense traffic impact. They do have a traffic study on the plans that was done that took in account, I believe, the COVID impact, but I don't recall seeing any impact related to the new T station down the street with the top station. There's also some, some words about having them extend that green line down towards, I don't know the name of the road down there, but past where the U-Haul place was around that area. And I just think that this project, the size and the scope, is just going to overwhelm that neighborhood. And I agree with the woman before who said, you know, people need to go down and actually look at that area and see what a six, two six-story buildings are going to do to that neighborhood. Also, there's a thousand-plus petition of neighbors and community residents who have signed a petition against this proposal, basically for those reasons. And we never hear talk about that during these calls and these proposals. And it just needs to be brought to the attention of the council that there is opposition, not, not as a NIMBY type of atmosphere, but simply because of the size and the scope of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
You can put it down, there you go.
Hi, Marion Aducey, 2 North Street, Medford. A couple of things. I want to talk about first the process here for this meeting tonight. There was a September 14th public meeting notice in the newspaper. There was a combined notice about both the October 4th community development meeting and this meeting tonight. And so that was really two months before tonight's meeting. In past public meeting notices that were in the newspaper, the meeting usually followed within two or three weeks after the notice. But this meeting tonight is two months after the notice. Now, I don't know if that's, two months is too long a period. Is it legal to have a long period like that? And if so, does this process need to be repeated because of the notification period was too long?
It is, it is legal.
The second thing is that the text of this notice said that for this community development board meeting, questions and comments can be submitted via email to the community development office or by phone to their number. So I went to the community development office and asked if I could see these public comments, which I did. And they gave me copies of both the postal and the email comments, but they said they were not counting the phone comments. Apparently, some phone comments came in. Even though the newspaper said that they could accept phones, but they weren't going to accept the phone, they took them in, but they weren't going to count them. So they have recently started the community development office referring people who call in comments to send in written comments instead. So therefore, the question is, is the validity of this particular public hearing notice? And because of the fact that they weren't accepting, they had the phone there and they weren't accepting the phones, does that need to be repeated? Because they're not accepting all the comments they got. So I don't know, probably can't answer that. Probably requires a legal decision. All right. I don't have email myself, but someone saw a bunch of emails from a Medford housing advocacy group who asked Councilor Collins when the vote on the Walkling Court zoning was going to happen, and because they wanted to submit comments. And Councilor Collins told them about that the real vote of this zoning was going to happen tonight. There was the October 4th meeting, but the real vote was going to happen tonight. Then on, a couple of days later, Director Hunt from the community development office clarified that whole, this whole process with a more detailed explanation of Councilor Collins's explanation, and said that the matter, on the matter of the count, let me see, the change process, and the comments on this matter count, the matter will count, it can influence the process really tonight, because tonight is really when the vote was going to happen. And then later on that same day, our incoming city councilor emailed the same advocacy group and said, thanks to Director Hunt, because now we know when we should intervene. So apparently, it appears to me that this advocacy group has gotten, got information that the general public doesn't know about, because all the general public saw, if you saw it, was the newspaper announcement that talked about the October 4th meeting and tonight's meeting, respond by email or respond by phone. therefore, the general public hasn't got the same information that people on the advocacy group got from city officials. So I'm just bringing that to everybody's attention. So whether that matters here, I don't know. As far as the petition, I was the one that did the petition and went circulated. I got, as I told you before, you've all got copies, 1,131 signatures on the petition. The people who signed the petition are not opposed to developing Walkling Court. They're opposed to the design, in the scale, in the number of people that are going to be there. The community wasn't, beyond the 400 feet, the community around Walkling Court was not notified about this. They were surprised when I came with the petition. They didn't know anything about this. So the community doesn't have information about this. The original architect that did the 1960s plan put the buildings along the track perpendicular to the track, not parallel with the track. Even though these are going to be modern buildings, nice buildings and all that, half of the units are still going to face the railroad track. Now, if any of you have elderly grandparents or people that you know, people who don't go out very much that are housebound, it's very depressing when all they have to look out to is a train track and a train. I had an elderly grandmother who was, had a, couldn't go out. She used to sit by the window and watch the people that went by, just as a, an uplifting thing. So even though it's a nice building, you know, and they compare it to other buildings that have been built in Somerville and further on down the track, those buildings in Somerville are probably adults, working people who go out every day, who only come home at night. So they don't have to worry about looking out the window. But seniors, this is their life, the ones that are housebound.
Marion, I do want to-
Yeah, I'll wrap it up here.
Yeah.
Okay. So in short, the 1,100 people that signed the petition are not opposed to this. They just want the design to be modified. It's too much in too small an area, and the community around there has not been consulted about what it's going to do to us or even considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Come up to the mic and just name and address for the record, please.
David Peters, 17 North Street. I want to reiterate that everything that they said, I agree with. We're here tonight to vote on the zoning, which is two major things. It is the density and it is the height. I am a director butter. Everybody, along with the over 1,100 people that signed the petition, like she said, wants the elderly and the disabled to have a nice place to live. That's not, and we agree that, you know, the site could be upgraded and needs to be. Like I said, we're opposed to the density and the height. I mean, we can go into a lot of other issues, but I know we're voting on zoning tonight. So that is the main issue. And again, over 1,100 people that live directly in that community wants, you know, is opposed to that, the way it is designed. I would ask to go back and have them redesign this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Brian Murphy, 16 Carding Street. I wasn't going to talk, but I've lived there my whole life, 47 years. I've seen the changes in Medford, 47 years. Our area now has become basically congested. The changes on South Street, the changes on Route 16, the trucks going up and down George Street, Summer Street, I mean, you got tractor-trailers on College Ave because of what they did at the circle up there. Basically, we're looking at changing the dynamics of that area. And as everybody stated here that's against it, is you guys have to go down there and look and see what the hell's there? And see how many people blow through those stop signs on Carding Street and West Street? See how many people don't stop at Autumn Street? They're talking about adding one parking space for every two units, I think, that's what they said? Right? Is that what they said?
Park at the number?
There's one parking space for every two units. Now, a little history on me. I worked in public housing. I've done maintenance and housings. It doesn't work. The parking situation's always a mess. The residents always getting tickets. It's crazy. I'm out of it now. But again, the zoning, we're sticking to the zoning right now, changing it again to six stories is totally wrong. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Raymond Petra, 31, Fergadav. I've lived there for the past 40 years. I heard about this because Mary came to me for a cigar, talking to me about this issue. I agree with everybody that said, one of the biggest issues I'm thinking the city's going to have is going to be the traffic. I don't know who did the survey, but let me tell you, if you ever drive down Boston Ave at 3:30 in the afternoon, you're taking 15 minutes to go the length of Boston Ave. They said the traffic is going to be a nightmare. They're saying it's not, you're talking, if you put 100 units in there, you're probably going to have 100 cars. And where are they going to go? There is going to be a big issue. Plus, the height of the building, like people are saying, it's going to block views for other people. The way they laid it out, I think, is going to be too congested. They need to go back and redesign, look at the area, and figure out what needs to do if they have to, as well, improve the other units. They're talking about the other units are all rundown. Whose fault is that? They need to be redone. Move the people somewhere else, like they're doing right here in Memphis Square. They're redoing the buildings. Why can't they redo the ones that are existing now so it makes it more convenient for the people that live there? I mean, that's an issue, because there's an issue with the housing. That's where they need to start. Get that fixed, redesign the whole area, and get to traffic situation. I think traffic is going to become a total disaster once this issue is they build them this way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come up to the mic, please? Name and address for the record, please.
Andrew Gozo, 3 North Ave. Let's come back to the Council's question. What is the vision for this? And what we see? We see this six-story building for elderly and disabled who would see from the windows, the rail tracks, listen to the noise, and as green line extension, the railroad tracks even get closer. And this is the people who gave their best lives to the country, some of them disabled, some of them probably veterans, who sacrificed their life, who risked their lives for us. And on the other hand, we have this family housing for families without disabilities in townhouses, shielded from the noise, just, you know, behind them. Does it make any sense? So I would reconsider the plan, how it was done, and consider what its vision would be. Can we make, affordable housing is important, considering that the inflation and race in rents, so definitely it's essential. But it's important to have affordable housing with dignity. It's important to have housing so that, to make sure that our elderly are protected. Who would put their mothers, grandmothers, or grandparents, or anyone with a disability against, to live against the rail tracks? And this is the housing for them. Most of the time, it's for permanent. It's going to be until the end of their life. And this is, I'm sure we could do better than this. And regarding the meetings, you're talking about engaging. Well, the engaging word means you work both ways. I didn't feel we had engagements. I think we had more serving. We have been served with what they want, and each time, we raised the issues, and pretty much, most of them have been ignored, have been considered, have been documented, but ignored. This is not engagement. So for the vision, it's important to consider what needs to be done here. So, and I would request the council to ask the team who works on this important project to think about it and revise the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to go to Eileen Lerner on Zoom.
Can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me now? I stand in opposition to the development. I too feel we need affordable housing, but this is definitely not the project that we need. And I, because of all the reasons that have been raised so far. But also, I have another question that has not been answered, which- which is what did the, um, the environmental review of the site reveal? Because someone at one of the meetings did admit that they found some chemicals in the soil. And I asked, well, I asked, what is, what, what are the chemicals? Have they been re, re, removed? Or if they need to be removed, how much is it going to cost to do the remediation? But I just don't think this is an appropriate site for all the reasons that the previous speakers have raised. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition of the project, either in person or on Zoom? Seeing none. This portion of the public hearing is closed. Is there any additional questions from councilors? And I know we have like one or two in questions from residents. I don't know if, um, Mr. Chigarella or Executive Director Driscoll, as far as like their findings from the environmental study, if that's something that's shared or public or if anyone can speak to that. I think the questions are just-
What was Joe saying?
Yeah, just the question just being, you know, what was found and, you know, what the remediation steps are. Just name an address for the record, please.
Uh, my name's Danny Gerber Latisha with Dietz and Company Architects.
Also about this with Fosso O'Neil, we're site civil.
Thank you. Um, the, uh, all the soil results should be public. It should be part of the packages that we have submitted and we're getting more information. Um, and that will be public, absolutely.
Okay, so those would be viewable online?
Yes, they will be public. And, um, you know, in, in general, most of the site is urban field. And as, as we, most of us know, like urban field back in the days was not really controlled. So we, and I don't want to get technical about stuff that's in there, but like we have not really found anything there that is not common urban field in Massachusetts. Um, and the idea is that we are still ongoing on investigations to like fully delineate on what's in there. Um, but by the time the project is done, um, you know, we are following all the, you know, states and federal regulations to really clean up the site. So, yeah, so like if somebody wants to get more technical, yeah, all these reports and ongoing investigation are, are part of the submissions and will be including any further submissions, especially during the special permit process.
Thank you. Any other questions from councilors or discussion from councilors at this time? Councilor Caviello.
So is, is there anything in the, in the soil that prevents housing? Maybe I, I didn't understand this question, but. You can answer this.
Um, Madam President, Councilor Caviello. So under state regulation, if they were to find anything that were to not allow housing, they must by law clean it up before they could build housing there. So either the results will find nothing that's a problem or they must clean it up. They cannot build the housing under state law with this. And when you do a project like this, you have somebody called a licensed site professional that holds a professional license that they could lose if they don't actually make sure we follow the law as part of that process, which is why I have complete confidence that it would be completely safe to live there. The standards for residential are much higher than this, than most of the other standards that you'll find.
Thank you. Councilor Col, good, thank you. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, President Rell. Um, I have some general comments, but I know a lot of, um, a lot of commentators brought up concerns about traffic in the neighborhood, which I know is an existing concern for the neighborhood as is. Remember at our previous meeting on this topic, um, we did get some more in-depth analysis of how the MHA, um, arrived at the recommendation of point five parking spaces per unit. And as I recall, at the time, there was even some discussion about are we even overshooting the need based on the analysis of residents and frequent visitors and staff? Um, since that was raised a lot in this meeting, I was just curious if the MHA wanted to, um, speak to that, um, while we have this platform before, for the discussion. Just because my recollection was that, um, this was sort of, uh, this number was arrived at after rounding up rather than rounding down.
So what we're actually proposing more parking than the point five. It's point five spaces for the senior disabled mid-rise. The family units are going to get one parking space per. So, yeah, it's, it, but for the phase one senior mid-rise building, it's point five spaces. But yeah, each family unit will get one space because families tend to, you know, be a, most families may have a car in the household, even though affordable housing is very expensive to own a car nowadays. But we feel that one space per household is adequate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion from councilors? Motion, do I? Councilor Collins.
Um, if there is no further discussion from the fellow councilors, I would motion to approve pending the public comment period. If that's the appropriate motion for this public hearing.
Public hearing, yes. So we have a motion from Councilor Collins to approve pending the six-day public comment period. Second by Vice President Fairs, if there's no further discussion, Sir Clerk, please call the roll. And this is again for the zoning change that has been presented to us tonight, understanding that if approved, then there would be a whole site plan review process that would exist and lots of meetings and opportunity for engagement on that as well. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Fairs.
Yes.
Councilor Caviello. Councilor Collins.
Yes.
Councilor Knight. Councilor Scarpellis. Councilor Sang.
Yes. Uh, six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one absent, the motion passes, um, pending the six-day public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Going to, uh, petitions presentations and similar papers, two-three dash four-four-eight, to City Council President Nicole Moreland, all members of the Medford City Council.
Motion to waive the reading of paper or summary.
Uh, I have a motion, uh, from Councilor Sang to waive the reading. Um, I'm just going to finish reading the, the heading. I appreciate it. I appreciate you stopping. I'm just going to go on through the heading. So, to City Council President Nicole Moreland, all members of the City Council Office of Planning Development, from Office of Planning Development Sustainability, date November ninth, twenty-twenty-three, regarding the proposed MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, quote, Wellington Station Multi-Family Overlay District. So we have a motion from Councilor Sang to waive the reading, um, in lieu of a overview from, I believe Director Hunt will probably provide that, or either Planner Evans. Second by, yeah, we'll wait for the, um, yeah. Folks, just for, um, just for audio purposes, if you could just go into the, the hall for conversations, I appreciate it, just so it gets picked up pretty robustly on our mics. Um, so I do, we step, so we have a motion, uh, you still can't hear. Folks, folks, if we could just, if we could just move conversations into the hallway so we can continue the meeting without, uh, so we can focus and hear. It just gets picked up really easily on the audio and it's hard to hear for folks at home and here. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, okay, so we have a motion to waive the reading in lieu of a brief synopsis from our PDS team, second by Council, from Vice President Fairs, second by Councilor Caviello. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll because it looks like Adam, Councilor Knight is still with us, but not with us, so call the roll. Okay, great, you're right, sorry. And I, and we talked about it.
Vice President Fairs. Councilor Caviello. Councilor Collins. Councilor Knight. Councilor Scarpellis. Councilor Sang is present.
Yes, uh, seven, uh, sixteen for zero, then again, one absent. Uh, we're going to suspend the reading for a brief overview from our Planning Development Sustainability, uh, team. And again, this is about the proposed MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, quote, Wellington Station Multi-Family Overlay District. So we will go to Planner Evans, or our Director.
Good evening, I'm Danielle Evans, Senior Planner. Um, this is, um, the referral meeting, so not the public hearing, not the time to talk about any substantive, um, you know, content of the, of the draft ordinance. But basically, um, just to give you some background, um, this has been a long planning effort. Last summer, we, um, were able to hire a consultant for free provided by Mass Housing Partnership that analyzed parcel by parcel around all of the eligible station areas. And there is a compliance model that you, you know, enter in all of the parcel information, all of the zoning inputs, and then it spits out how many units could conceivably yield. And the number that we're mandated to have is six thousand four hundred forty-three, I believe. And when you take out all of the excluded land, like Tufts University, META-owned land, open space, the only real place that worked was Wellington Station. So we moved forward with, um, drafting an amendment to create what we're calling the Wellington Station Multi-Family Overlay District, which would be, you know, what an overlay is, that it would be, you know, on top of the existing underlying zoning, which is the mixed-use zoning districts and industrial. And across, um, twenty-eight, I believe there's more industrial or maybe an apartment three, like. So the, the first public hearing would be tomorrow at the Community Development Board. We have a very quick timeline as a, as a subway community. We are supposed to have this approved by the end of the year. We have advertised the public hearing to come to you all, the City Council, on December twelfth. So just to be clear, that timeline allows for the city CD board to meet tomorrow night and then again at the end of the month for two meetings. If they decide they don't want to pass, they want to review it for two meetings before sending you a recommendation. And then the City Council has two meetings in December, which gives you that timeline. Um, we've also offered that we can do a committee of the whole. Our zoning consultant has offered to come in and do what she would, what she's calling for other communities, MBTA Zoning One-O-One, where she would come in and talk about the whole MBTA zoning, do that briefing for about an hour, one evening, um, and then have, so that when you're presented with the zoning itself, you've already gotten that background on it. If you want, we could actually use that committee of the whole to talk about, um, Medford-specific zoning, um, although it might be awkward because it would be in the middle of the CD board, uh, public hearing process, and it would be right before you open your own public hearing on it. Um, so I'm not really sure how that would line up, but we're happy to have the consultant come in and talk about the MBTA zoning as well. But the item on the agenda tonight, this is, as you all know with zoning, is a legal required referral. The, the board actually, the council doesn't actually have a choice. They have to refer it to the CD board for comment tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question.
Councilor Scarpellis.
What do the residents of Wellington say?
So we've held one public meeting on this, and the reality is we have to pass this to stay in compliance with the state, and we cannot do it, we can't make it work in any other part of the, the city.
So will the residents of Wellington know about this?
I don't know what they know about it. They've been advertised, who is the rest of the city has?
Again, it's the same, same situation. It's really the same situation. You're in front of us today to hold those something through that has to be accepted tonight.
It does not have, this, this is actually the zoning.
Right.
You, when a zoning amendment comes to this council from anybody whatsoever.
No, I know that, but the way you presented it.
Right.
Was, it seems like even after this process, seems like it's going to go pretty quick. It has to be done right away.
You may take that up with the state. I am very sorry about that. We have argued with the state many times about this timeline. We don't, don't like it. They've changed the rules on us several times since this law was passed. We don't like that either. They actually, after our last meeting with the state, gave us more consulting time and provided additional free consulting to us. But the state timeline does not allow for very much public input. We've had a public meeting on it and we will have two public hearings on it.
With one public meeting on it?
Yeah.
So when did we find out about it? When did your office find out, say, know about it?
It's been out there for more than a year, but they've changed the rules on it and the regulations came out in May. So we've only had the regulations to work within the, um, the, uh, compliance model since May. August, actually. They revised it in August with a, an end of December deadline. I was, you know, pulling my hair out.
I don't, again, these are things that, some things that just out of control, but in the totality of, of the, of these processes, it just doesn't look good. It's no different than the voting situation. It just doesn't look good. I consistently get constituents that reach out and say, we knew nothing about this. We didn't hear this. And so I, I, I think, you know, as a council, we need to figure out a way, whenever we put these projects out, that there's got to be some assistance that if they, they don't have the funding or anything that has to be done, because the biggest issues we have to come back to us are the constituents that they knew nothing about this. I, you know, I, we, we had, we were fortunate enough with the last speaker, the last project, that the housing authority did a lot of the legwork on their dime, or the way they processed it. But this is something that I'm hearing over and over again, especially in the last week. So I appreciate it and I understand that the situation's a little, little different and it's just not fair because I know what's going to happen. We're going to get phone calls tomorrow, the people watch this wall and say, you don't care about us. The answer's easy, at least we know now, we could say this is state mandated and this is a situation and it's out of our hands, but it just, it just, it just doesn't, just doesn't look good. That's all. Thank you.
So we would appreciate any assistance in getting the word out to people and letting them know about it, asking them to attend the meetings. Um, and we do put out a newsletter as well from our office that we try and sign people up to so they'll know about these meetings as well.
Um, Vice President Fairs, then Councilor Sang.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you, guys, for, uh, pulling this together. Um, I know it has been a bumpy road with the state process and I can appreciate that. I just want to kind of put this in the context of the work that we're hopefully going to be talking about, hiring someone to work with us very soon, since I think the, uh, the procurement, uh, the RFPs are due by Thursday. Uh, and I'm, I'm waiting for the second phase of our zoning work. It's my understanding that this is what we need to get into compliance with the law by the deadline that the law requires us to be in compliance by. But as we move through the process of looking at the zoning, we could potentially go more in-depth on, on that area, uh, additional changes, look at this district and potentially make adjustments to this district through that process. I just want to make sure that's, that's correct and that's your understanding as well.
Yes, I imagine with, um, a comprehensive rezoning of the city that we would change the underlying zoning. And so that's, what's one great thing about the overlay is it doesn't affect the underlying. And we could always amend the, the overlay, which is one great advantage of being a city, is that we have many bites at the apple. It's not like town meeting. There's, um, there's two, two MBTA communities that are rapid transit that also have the same deadline and they go by town meeting and like they're really going crazy because it's, they would have another year that, they might have to live with something that they don't like.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, this is a state.
Our Arlington's passed theirs, I think, so.
Arlington's is like, then they're ahead of the game, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. But interestingly enough, this is actually sort of downzoning because, believe it or not, we actually allow quite a bit of housing units. It's just tweaking it so that it's, um, you know, by right with site plan review. And we're doing, we're having an economic feasibility analysis done so that we can keep our inclusionary zoning. Um, we're hoping that will be completed soon. But when I say that we're downzoning, basically what we've done is to build an incentive to go higher, um, by providing more affordability or, um, ground floor retail, since we can't require that. So around a transit station, um, you would want it to be walkable and for there would be amenities to the people that live there. But unfortunately, the law doesn't allow us to- us to mandate that, so we're building in incentives. So hoping that developers would do these things, so that they can go higher, which is pretty much already allowed in the MUC. So it won't be, it sounds scary, but it's not mandating that any of those units actually get built, but that they be zoned. So they could be built, a lot of it's built out. So I feel like the big planning and ambitious work that our office does, like, this isn't going to be the panacea that solves the housing crisis, I think that we're doing a lot of other things in Medford. And we're trying to tailor this to work for the city, in a way that furthers, like, all of our goals in a comprehensive way.
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanted to put that forward, just to say, this is not the end-all-be-all here, and we have discussed extensively that this council is planning to conduct an extensive public process over the next 18 months to two years on rezoning the community. I think there is no public process that will satisfy all people. I do think that doesn't mean that we can't make an even better effort than we are able to do with the resources that we are appropriated by the mayor, to reach as many people as possible. But I'm really looking forward to the deep work that we're going to be doing together in partnership. And I say all of that because I'm super excited for it, I do want to say, I wish we had seen something or had a meeting on this a little sooner, not necessarily on the draft, but just on the law itself. And I know, we've had, did we?
I just, sorry.
Well over a year ago, it's about how long?
So it's been so long that I've forgotten.
Not, not to contradict you.
No, 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 I take the contradiction.
It just thought, real, because I was like, we put together a webpage for this.
I remember that.
And the webpage exists, and on the webpage, it has a link to the presentation that we made to this council on March 22nd, 2022.
So yes, yeah, okay. So that was like, right after it passed.
Yeah.
I think we should have checked in in between. And I don't put that blame on any one party, obviously, I forgot that meeting two years ago, too. And George just called me a slacker, if anyone couldn't hear it. But, uh, no, you know, we're just, yeah, we're good friends. But I just, I'm really excited for that partnership, and I appreciate the work that your office has done on this, and worked through an incredibly difficult landscape of changing rules and regulations, and a change in the entire gubernatorial administration from the folks who passed this. And they'd even renamed the office that was working on it with you, I think, and reorganized it. So I know that's been really difficult. And I appreciate that we'll be able to come back and look at this again, and even though that this is what the law requires, that you've been thoughtful about making sure that what we actually want in that area is also still possible.
Counselor say.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you guys for your work on this as well. I know it's really difficult working within the parameters of a state mandate that keeps changing, and to get us product before the deadline, I think is an achievement that we should acknowledge. I think there'll be some time for people to comment on this, for adjustments to be made. I think we understand, the council understands our task tonight, and what our vote means, and the way that, in my opinion, it should go. But I also wanted to say, as a resident, or as a former resident of Wellington, I am excited to see more action happening there. I know a lot of residents on the ground feel that as well. I know that we've had, you know, a lot of conversations about safety and walkability there, and, you know, this, a more comprehensive plan like this, with more incentives built into it, creates, I think, an ideal vision, a more ideal vision in that sense. Maybe we make some tweaks, but a more ideal version of what we have, that creates a safer neighborhood by making it more walkable, and more to incentivize attention to that behavior. And so I'm really grateful for your work on this. I know there have been folks writing me about reducing parking minimums even more, given the proximity to the station. I think that's something worthy of being talked about. But in any case, we'll get into the details with the CD Board and with what they recommend, but I'm just very grateful for your work.
Thank you, Counselor Say. Counselor Carvill.
Thank you, Madam President. I know, at least, I know we have talked about this in the past, but what's the status with the T fighting us on this?
The air rights and that, so just for full transparency, while this overlay literally includes the MBTA parcel, it legally does not, because legally, the MBTA is not bound by our zoning. But if it was to be used for other things, it, I mean, the air rights and all could fall under this. We have not had any very recent conversations with the MBTA about their bus location, facility location, but we have also been talking with the Resilient Mystic Collaborative and doing a lower mystic watershed assessment of buildings and large developments and things and critical infrastructure. And so the Resilient Mystic Collaborative is now actually pushing back on the idea that we shouldn't be building new critical infrastructure in serious flood zone locations, and that that may be a very questionable choice to be building one of two electric bus repair and charging stations in an area that's at a high flood zone risk. Whereas if you were building parking with apartments on top, that could be built in a way that could handle being in a flood zone. Whereas if an electric bus repair facility was flooded, that could ruin the whole thing. Like, I don't, we don't see how they could flood-proof that from saltwater flooding. So that is a concern that is being raised to the MBTA at this time. The big difficulty is, they don't know where else to put that bus facility.
Well, the train station is also a flood zone.
So that's a little different, because it, that train station doesn't support all the trains for the entire MB, the entire MBTA fleet. They're talking about putting a bus depot there that would support half the buses for the entire MBT regional bus fleet. And that's perhaps not the right place for that. Whereas if that location flooded right now, it would knock out one branch of the Orange Line. That's not great, but that's not their entire system, and that's also not their evacuation system in the event of a major emergency. Whereas, one could picture, if we needed to evacuate the floodable areas in the greater Boston area, we're going to start putting people in buses, right? Like, that, obviously. So that's, we're starting to raise some of these issues with them.
So also, as probably, in the flood area, how does that affect the building process?
It just, there's regulations about how do they have to build, so that they can handle, withstand flood, things like building certain building standards. But it's very different when it's a building than something like a piece of critical infrastructure.
Does that leave out Counselor Bell? Need further discussion, or do I have a motion?
Motion to refer to Community Development Board, oh, sorry, go ahead.
On the motion of Vice and Bears, to refer to Community Development Board, seconded by Counselor Say, Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Mr. Vice and Bear.
Yes.
Counselor Carvill.
Yes.
Yes.
Six affirmative, zero negative, one absent, and motion passes.
Madam President, motion to suspend the rules, take Paper 23447.
Motion of Vice and Bears to suspend the rules, take Paper 23447. I am confident that Counselor High is here, so we're going to take this as a voice vote. Second by Counselor Say, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes, I'm going to have Vice and Bears sit in the chair. For a moment.
Paper 23-447, November 9th, 2023, to the Honorable President and members of the Medford City Council, Medford City Hall, Medford, Massachusetts, 02155, Car Park Phase II Grant Resolution. Dear President Morell, and members of the City Council, I am excited to share that the city has been awarded a $1 million Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. You're going to. Okay. For Phase II of the car park renovation, the city has also been awarded $1.5 million in federal earmark funding through the Department of Energy, with the support of Representative Clark. Car Park Phase II consists of two sub portions, deemed Phase II A and Phase II B. The total cost of Phase II A is $2,015,000, and is proposed to be funded by the LWCF grant and ARPA funding. The LWCF grant requires that the City Council pass a resolution accepting the grant and acknowledging the dedication of the property as parkland. The grant also requires that the full funding for projects be appropriated upon acceptance of the grant. The enclosed drafted resolution addresses these requirements. The grant will then reimburse a $1 million portion of the appropriation. Phase II B of the project has a total cost of $3 million. The federal earmark funding requires a one-to-one match of non-federal funding to the award. Please note that LWCF is a federal grant program administered through the state, and therefore cannot be used to match funds. Therefore, our respectful request and recommend that Phase II B be funded with $1,385,000 in ARPA funds. The city, spearheaded by Planning, Development, and Sustainability, is exploring additional funding sources to complete the $115,000 deficit in funding. There is significant community support for open space and recreation in Medford, and the city's commitment to accessibility. Broad community outreach has been performed to create inclusive, comprehensive vision for Car Park, and there is a strong community passion and investment in the completion of this project. In summary, our respectful request and recommend that your honorable body adopt the enclosed resolution to accept the grant for Phase II A of the car park renovation, and authorize a loan order request of $1 million to the project. As stated in the resolutions, the LWCF grant will reimburse $1 million on the completion of the project. In addition, our respectful request and recommend that the total of $2.4 million in ARPA funding be allocated to Phase II of the project, $1,015,000 of which will go towards Phase II A, and $1,385,000 of which will goes towards Phase II B. The LWCF grant for Car Park requires that a copy of a certified vote be sent to them December, by December 1st. I hope that these requests have been submitted with sufficient time for the council to review and meet the important deadline. Sincerely, Brianna Lego-Kern, Mayor. Enclosures. Am I reading this whole thing too? Okay. Alone. Appreciate the confidence of my colleagues. A loan order to appropriate funds for the implementation of Phase II of the car park renovation.
Motion to waive the remainder of the reading.
Thank you. Counselor Collins. Motion, Counselor Carvill, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. I will defer to Amanda Centrella, who definitely wanted to sit here and listen to me read the rest of that at 10:10 PM. Amanda.
Thank you guys so much. My name's Amanda Centrella, I work as a staff planner in the Office of Planning, Development, and Sustainability. I help to manage different parks' projects. And as, as was already sort of outlined in the memo very thoroughly, I'm not sure if it makes sense for me to go back over those breakdowns, and I'm happy to if people have questions. Essentially, we've been awarded grant funding, and there are certain requirements for receiving that grant funding. In tandem with that, we're asking for an approval and your consideration for ARPA funds for this Phase II project. Would counselors be interested in hearing what's in Phase II as far as scope?
Any counselors want to hear what's in Phase II regarding the scope of the project? Counselor Collins does.
Okay, great. So Phase II is, has a lot of really interesting things going on, complete renovation of the playground, splash pad, small skate park, two basketball courts, one of which will be covered, sheltered, so that play can be extended through, you know, rain, or if it's really hot out. And on that roof will be solar panels, which will power other aspects of the park. We will, what else are the major ones? There's a teen area with swings and obstacle course, fitness equipment that is appropriate for older kids and adults. Gazebo area that's sheltered again and overlooking the playground space. Really, the intent of this park is, I think, to make it a multi-generational space. All of these things are ideas that were brought to us by community members. So this vision is imaginative and exciting and ambitious, and it was the result of a lot of community feedback. That's the gist.
Mr. President? Yes, Counselor Carvill.
This is unbelievable. Like, we're so excited about it, it's our neighborhood, and, you know, the only thing, I told my 20-year-old, "John, I'll take you to the park." So, I mean, everything about it is amazing. I think that, I'm sure, Ms. Hunt, I, this is one of the, I got about 15 phone calls from the Butters, that it's a really big, dog-friendly neighborhood. And they were, they're confused that they didn't know about the process fully. So I, this is what, you know, and they wanted to come here tonight, and I said, "Well, this isn't about that process." So I don't know if there's something we can do to talk with them, set up a separate meeting with these folks that, so they can understand the process that you, it was, I believe that question was, could you do separate areas in construction? I don't see that happening, so, from what I've been told. So I don't, but I think if that, other than that, I don't think anybody in this country is looking at that, at what we're doing up there. It's, it's really bringing people back up the hill. I mean, it, you know, when you talk about, you know, it's, it's re-energizing so many different groups, you know? You have the baseball people that are saying, "Wow, you have, you know, we have new ball fields, we have multipurpose, we have, you know, special needs." You have adults saying that, looking for that apparatus park. I mean, this is something that, you know, I'm excited to say we're far ahead of Somerville, you know, because this is what I do in Somerville, and the people are begging for this in Somerville. So this is in planning stage. So I'm so excited that, that we're saying this. So I, you know, and I understand the process we have to go through, the funding mechanism, it's nice to see ARPA money being used this way. It's exactly what, you know, you want it to be used for, so I would move approval, Madam President. Mr. President. You're going to get a lot of that.
Happy to accept the title.
The next two years, Madam President.
It'll be a constant reminder of what we're missing.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, approval for first reading on the loan order.
Right, first reading.
Counselor Carvill. I do have a question about that, maybe to Director Hunt. They want a response by December 1st.
So, right, we were thinking, so the, so the part that needs to be approved is, sorry, on your computer, my computer, is that, it's the, I keep referring to it as the whereas is? Sorry, I should speak into the mic, I know this, sorry, it's late. The part that needs approval, that the state needs to know you voted on, is the whereas is section.
The loan order.
And that, I guess, includes technically a loan order, which we hadn't been thinking of needing three readings.
We treat loan orders, and bond councils requested that we treat loan orders as ordinances. We could waive the readings.
The, I will say that bond council has reviewed this.
Next. Which one was that? Okay.
And Mike, can we, I don't know what the timing is, so I will tell you that my office has started advertising in the Boston Herald, because we could not, we've run out of, it's too difficult to work with Wicked Local between the timelines and their billing department. We've actually kind of given up, and we've started advertising in the Herald, which really speeds up our turnaround times on advertising of items.
Have to do that here.
But I, I didn't realize that you would need to advertise it in the, but I can.
Right.
So if we could.
We'd have to advertise it in time to take it up for third reading on the 28th, for you to get it.
On the 28th, and we would, we would ask if it could then, the legal paper, be certified by the clerk's office the next day, and not wait till the minutes are approved by the council.
In terms of the certification of vote, that can have, that can get done. The concern here is the advertising, because, because, you're right, if you use, if we use Wicked Local, we're not going to be able to have it advertised in time to have, to have third reading on the 28th. But we can, we'll figure out how to advertise it, so we're going to get it advertised in the Herald. And in terms of certifying, in terms of certifying the vote, yeah, we can, that can get done, no problem at all.
Yeah, I think, though, in terms of signing, I think we should check in offline and make sure, because we don't have a solicitor, we've been mailing things to KP Law to sign on behalf of the city solicitor, which is obviously something we would not like to be doing, but it's where we are at. So if we need their signature on a piece of paper, they would, we don't, we won't, I think, okay.
Okay.
I feel good about that, I think we should double-check in on it, just to make sure that we don't need someone from KP Law to sign this, but that's two weeks away, so.
So, right, we have had this reviewed by bond council and KP Law before it was on your agenda.
Right, they're just literally signing ordinances as city solicitor.
Right.
And that's just, it's a part of the formal process to have on the green It's a part of the formal process to have on the green paper. Yeah.
They won't need it to go on the green paper, because the green paper is the last step. As long as the mayor has approved the ordinance, after the council approves it for third reading and then the mayor approves it, it would then go onto the green paper, so it would still be an ordinance.
Okay.
Once the mayor signs it.
Okay. So I have a motion from Counselor Scarpelli to approve for first reading, seconded by Counselor Collins. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Collins. Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Collins. Counselor Seck.
Yes.
President Morrell.
Yes.
Vice Clerk. Yes, six in the affirmative, none in the negative, one absent. The motion is approved for first reading.
Thank you.
And I will turn it back over to the President.
Thank you, and good evening. We're gonna leave now.
I think we're under suspension. Do I have a motion to revert... Motion of Counselor Scarpelli to revert back to regular order of business, seconded by Counselor Sang. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Find what page? Motion, orders and resolutions, 23-449, offered by Counselor Collins. Be resolved to the Subcommittee on Ordinances and Rules, need to consider a wildlife feeding ordinance. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, President Morrell. I'm bringing this forward after some back-and-forth with residents who are concerned about excessive wildlife feeding that they've been noticing in their neighborhood, that they have been unable to resolve through neighbor outreach alone. This proposal would be simply in the interest of curbing excessive or inappropriate wildlife feeding, not talking about rural bird feeders, not trying to steal anybody's joy, in residential areas in the interest of keeping homes and porches and yards free from animal traffic, food, waste, arthritis, harms to peace and health. There are some nearby communities to ours that have passed similar ordinances, just in order to enable code enforcement to, you know, intervene around this when necessary that we can look to as a jumping-off point. So I would motion to approve and send to Subcommittee.
Thank you. So on the motion of Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Scarpelli, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes? Like, I don't know. Subcommittee on Ordinances and Rules, you're just like a diseased person to look at. That's there. Yeah. All right. 23-452, offered by Counselor Collins. Counselor Sang and President Morrell. Be resolved that Medford City Council recognize transgender day of remembrance on November 20th, 2023, and commit to remembering all those lost to anti-trans violence, honoring all those affected by anti-trans violence bigotry, standing with our transgender community members, and reaffirming their right to thrive and live authentically. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, President Morrell, and thank you to yourself and Counselor Sang for joining with me on this resolution. Transgender Day of Remembrance is observed on November 20th. This is the day to think about and remember those who have tragically lost their lives due to hatred and bigotry and violence simply for being who they are. And it's a day to contemplate those who paved the way for others in the trans and, you know, greater LGBTQ+ community to be able to live their authentic lives and thrive in our community against, you know, the history of hardship, countering hardship. So I appreciate this opportunity to reaffirm our solidarity with the trans community and to have a, you know, a moment to contemplate sacrifices and tragedies that have come before us and the work ahead to fully equitable in state society for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. Counselor Seck.
Thank you, Counselor Collins, for initiating this, and thank you to my fellow co-sponsors on this. This is on something that is really important to me personally, as someone who's grown up with a lot of transgender friends who've been bullied and attacked on the streets, not in Medford, but in general. And, you know, it's important, I think, to really shed light, bring attention to this, because everyone deserves to live in dignity. And I think it's also particularly important to acknowledge the intersectionality of transgender violence in our country as well, especially the higher rates at which Black transgender folks and Indigenous transgender folks face violence, bigotry in public. And so I'm really grateful for the council for taking this up, and there's still so much more work to do, but I'm very proud to be a co-sponsor of this one.
Thank you, Counselor Sang, and thank you to you and Counselor Collins for sponsoring this with me. The transgender day of remembrance came after the result of the murders of two Black transgender women in Alston and Watertown. So very close, and I think, I mean, it just speaks to it being in our backyard. Sometimes I think we think, living in an area like this, it's not something that's faced by the community, but of course it is. And I think to Counselor Sang's point, this really highlights the intersectionality of the issue, and I think it's important this year, it's important every year. But as, you know, we have record-breaking numbers of transgender, anti-transgender legislation being presented across the country that has very real impacts because of the legislation, but because it further others, this community, and lets people look at them as different and people that they should not treat with the dignity and respect they deserve like the rest of us. So if in small part we can bring this forward from the city council, say we remember, say this is important, that I'm glad we can do that. Counselor Seck.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank my colleagues for putting this on the agenda and just echo all the comments that have been made. I know a lot of my trans friends are feeling very afraid in this environment, in this country, where we see all this active and successful legislation, never mind the media campaigns and just the general, what I would deem to be relatively violent things that are said on a regular basis about transgender people. And I just think it's important that when we see things like that, and we see so much evidence of those things happening right here nearby, that we speak up and say that it's not right. So thank you for putting these on, and I have to support this.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Behrs. So on the motion of Counselor Collins, is seconded by Counselor Sang. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. 23-453, offered by Counselor Collins, Vice Speaker Behrs. Be resolved that Subcommittee on Ordinances and Rules need to consider an ordinance to regulate the retail sales of animals raised in commercial breeding facilities. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, President Morrell. This proposal was brought forward by a constituent who's been active in local efforts to ensure that commercial sales of pets in pet shops is done in a humane way, is kind of observing best practices around making sure that commercial pet stores in our communities are not promoting or participating in inhumane raising and selling of pets. So this would be an ordinance project to look at what nearby communities are doing to try to take local action, to make sure that is the case, and to see what might make sense to tailor for Medford.
Thank you. Vice Speaker Behrs.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is another term that you commonly hear used, that this is trying to address is the puppy mills issue, where you have very inhumane conditions of breeding of dogs for a commercial sale. And just to make sure that our community and the businesses in our community, although I'm sure that folks are doing their due diligence, that we have it on the record, that they are not in any way participating in those kind of puppy mill supply chains. So thank you for co-sponsoring this and leading on this, Counselor Collins.
So on the motion of Counselor Collins, seconded by Vice Speaker Behrs. All those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed? Motion passes. That's Counselor Collins. We do have a item under suspension as well. Okay.
I think I have one.
Okay. What?
Stretch code for third reading?
Let's take Counselor Scarpelli.
We lost your... This past week, we lost a member of our teaching community at Medford High School. We lost John Lozaro, a former colleague and friend. John's had a tough last couple of years, but no matter what he went through physically, he still found his way to his classroom and to support his chemistry students and his science students at the high school. Great demeanor. He always had a sense of, you know, confidence that only John had. And, you know, we went through a lot of beginnings when we first started together as teachers. So I know his wife, Kate, is one of the best people in the world, and they raised two amazing children, John and Elizabeth. I know my son, John, went to school with Elizabeth, and it's definitely... You can feel the void in our community. He also had a brother, Philip, and his brother, Mike, who's also a custodian at the high school. So I know that he'll be laid to rest tomorrow. I hope that we can get word to the school department. I hope that they'll be lowering the flag at half-mast in his honor, because he deserves that. So, you know, to John's family, we feel your loss. We'll never feel the pain that they do, but he'll be missed for sure. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Seck.
Thank you. I just wanted to send my deepest condolences and sympathies to his family. I'm grateful for Counselor Scarpelli for introducing this. I was one of his students, and I've been reflecting over the weekend about that year at Chemistry and how much fun it was. And I think that's something that, you know, will stay in my MHS experience forever when I think about my time there. You know, Mr. Lozaro would tell... He would tell so many stories, and he was so proud of his family. And, you know, in every story that you told, there was wisdom. There was, you know, these nuggets of wisdom that we really valued. And, you know, we laughed about the stories, but we'd also talk about, you know, what we learned from those stories of his life. He also had the funniest, the wittiest one-liners and comebacks. So funny, in fact, and actually so wise, in fact, that we started this Google Doc of quotes of what he would say as a teacher. And, you know, this doc became so legendary that I checked it yesterday, and people were still adding to it last year. And I had the opportunity to stop by his wake before this and to, you know, talk to Kate and the rest of his family, and we joked around a little bit about the document and about his wit. And that's something that I felt like will be part of his students forever, that experience. We really did love him, and I'll miss him really well.
Thank you, Counselor Seck. Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I knew the Lozaro family personally, and I was shocked when I found out about it. I knew he was struggling, you know, over the last couple of years, but didn't think that he was in that kind of condition. And, you know, he's been a good teacher and a mentor to a lot of students at the high school, and like Counselor Scarpelli says, you know, lifelong family. You know, they're gonna be missed in the community. Yeah. My condolences were to the family.
Thank you. Vice Speaker Behrs.
Thank you, Madam President. I appear, and I'm apparently one of the few people who made it all the way through Medford High School without having him as a teacher and without having really much direct experience with him at all. And the amount of communication that I've gotten from folks in the community saying, "Did you hear this news?", and the stories that I've heard and the stories that folks have shared, I think that's a testament to the fact that even though I only knew about Mr. Lozaro through the stories of others, that I knew so much about him and that people contacted me in such a big way. So, you know, my condolences are with the family, with the generations of students that he educated, who are thinking about him, and also celebrating the great moments that they had with him as well. And, you know, I've had a small part in that over these past few days, that it was entirely unearned, and I'm grateful for it. Thank you.
Counselor Collins.
Thank you. Thank you, President Morrell. I famously was not in Medford for high school, but, you know, I think we can all relate to having that one or two special teachers that stay with us for, you know, as students that stay with us for our entire lives, that are mentors, that leave such a big impression that we never forget about. And it's clear from what I've been hearing from friends about Mr. Lozaro after the past few days, that he was that person for just hundreds and hundreds of students, and it's hard to imagine having a greater impact on your community than that. So I'm just thinking of his family. My heart goes out to them, sending my most sincere condolences, and makes me wish I had known him.
Thank you. Please rise. I'm sorry. Thank you. Please rise for a moment of silence. Going to Vice Speaker Behrs, I believe you said, or someone asked about something for...
Yes, Madam President. Motion to take Paper 23-023 off the table and approve for third reading.
Motion of Vice Speaker Behrs to take 23-023 off the table and approve for a third reading. Sir Clerk, when you are... And this is the stretch code. Energy Code is presented to the council, developed along with the Office of Planning, Development, and Sustainability as well.
This is adopting the state's green building code, yes.
Yeah. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
I'll repeat. Because I own a solar company now? I'm like the rest of you phonies.
A solar magnate, George Scarpelli. He wants me to join, but then we wouldn't have anyone to vote on solar.
I'm gonna call the roll. Vice President Behrs.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Collins. Fantastic. Counselor Scarpelli is recused. Counselor Seck, yes. President Morrell.
Yes. Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one absent, one recusal. Motion passes for third reading. We also have this the end of our agenda. Is there anyone... Just follow participation? Mr. Murphy? I'm...
Don't kidding. Why don't you say something? I don't listen to anybody.
Press the button, because you want to be... We want to make sure you're heard at the late hour.
Yeah. Chris Murphy, 15 Cobb Street. Before I go, talk about my piece. I know you guys enjoy my occasional visits, but for the last time, for a couple of you, Cole, Rick, Adam, wherever the hell he is, just thank you, guys, for all you do, all you have done, and all you continue to do. You know, it's not easy, as this night could tell. And then, but Rick, I just wanted to say, thank you for always being a friend of Medford Football, and always, at every budget season, taking the ball of pushing for Hormel Stadium, which we hope one of you will pick up that ball and run with that. But the reason I am here next week, Medford High School Football will play for the 136th time against the Malden Golden Tornadoes. We will be at... It is a home game for us this year. After a couple of years, we finally back on the odd-year home, even year away. But we do have a couple great events coming up this week that I also wanted to come and push. This Thursday at 4 o'clock at McDonald's Stadium, which is named after a Medford High School alumni. I always love to throw that in there, that there is a plaque for Tobit McDonald, who was the captain of the 1935 Medford High School football team, but they don't like to acknowledge... It's not acknowledged on the plaque. But at 4 o'clock, they're gonna be doing a unified, our second annual unified flag game, which last year was an awesome event. We got the varsity team involved on both sides, and it was just an awesome event. The news is there. If you can make it down there at 4 o'clock, it's a great event. These kids have a blast. And then immediately following that, our JV team, a couple new kind of tradition we've kind of had, is our JV team will play each other the week before. And then next Thursday, and the pepper-avia Wednesday, I think at 11 o'clock, but 10 o'clock next Thursday. And I am proud to stand here before you as the booster president of a winning football This year has been the first... I've kind of dubbed it with Coach Curly, the first... I call it the first a long time type of year, first time in 16 years with 15... First time in 14 years with five wins. Longest streak we've had in a long time, where we haven't gone under 500 all the season. We've only let up an average of 16 points a game this year, which is the best we've had in a long time. And all that with 42 great young men and women who would play hurt, play tough, and an amazing coaching staff. And we're finally, something George and I have pushed for the last couple of years, we're finally seeing the John Curley effect, where the attitude of these kids has changed, and it's showing. And believe it or not, we have a very young team, too. We are going to return a lot of starters. So I think you're going to see for years to come, a very successful program. And I can't, like you said, all those that have been, helped this team over the years, just thank you and thank you for giving me this couple of minutes.
Thank you for bearing with us so long.
Go Mustangs.
Council Carviallo.
Thank you, Madam President. Chris, thank you for the work you've done, and you know my family's commitments for the 50-plus years, Carviallo family, football in the city of Medford. Glad to see the program is turning around and going on the right track again. Thank you to you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
To keep, I don't think people understand the work that goes into getting these kids fed, helping raise money for the uniforms and other programs to do. Thank you. Thanks to Coach for getting us back on track.
If I can, Madam President, I know that one thing that I need to mention again is the commitment of the football program to the community. I think that shines brighter than any win we've ever had, and I think that's what's important. Their commitment to the community and volunteering, I think it's, they don't have to win a game for what they do with the community. So I applaud you guys for doing that, but I think that Coach Curly has to take a lot of credit, but I also have to, people have to understand, if you didn't live in Medford, if you didn't go to Medford High School, if you didn't play a sport, if you didn't have the luck of having Steve Miller as your equipment manager at Medford High, or live in that era, you truly don't understand what it means to be a true Mustang. I mean, Bud Kelly coined the term blue and white flowing through your veins. And legitimately, my freshman year, I wanted to cut myself just to see if I was, is it true? Because that's how much it convinced you, but I will tell you.
Buddy once told me that you can only see it if you're in the room with an actual Mustang. So if you cut yourself and you see red, the other guy in the room is not a real Mustang.
So what you don't, it's a Medford thing, Nicole. Don't do that, but listen.
Believe it, if you come to the game next Thursday, you can buy an I believe blue and white t-shirt.
I do believe blue and white, but I will tell you, my point in saying this is that it's very different, because when you hear some people say it, Mustang pride, there's some clowns that do do it, and that's just a word for them. But we appreciate you, Chris, because I think you keep that alive. And I think that's what you're seeing the change with these kids. It's not just John Curley, it's Chris Murphy's energy to say, hey, listen, being a Medford Mustang is part of life. And you know what? We're Medford Mustangs behind this reel. It's like, you feel like part of the team, and that's what I think our whole community's lacking right now. We're forgetting that we're all Mustangs. And maybe if people lived like that a little bit more and understood that to be true, I think that it would stop a lot of animosity in our community.
These are things that, I mean, you and I have lost a lot of mentors in the last couple of years. I can't, I could, between Joe Grandi, Bud Kelly, Armin Carviallo, I could go on and on. And you've kind of always said, who's going to be there to? I'm trying. But like I said, we can disagree on politics, we can disagree on all these things in life, but when it comes to things like this, this is something we can all agree on, that we can all come together and smile and be happy, and for a couple hours, go out and watch this team play and just be all proud that we're all from Medford.
Well, I feel inclined, my purpose is right, to be the good guy.
Yep.
This council sports is all together.
Oh, oh.
Don't worry, everything's good.
All together as Mustangs, supporting our team. So Nicole, I'll even buy a baby a nice little outfit, a little Mustang outfit, Chris.
See how much you can tell her.
One of the big reasons I still do, my kids love it.
Yeah.
Love it. My four-year-old is, I'll pick him up from preschool, we going to feed the football team today? I'm like, we don't feed them every day.
We did have Council Sang, I'll go back to Council Carviallo.
I'll be quick. As an Medford High grad, I am so ready for this match. I'm just so ready for it. You know what? You mentioned to the record this year, but every time I go on Twitter and I see MHS Athletics tweet out the results of how our kids are doing, it just makes me so proud to be from this community. And I think we talk a lot, we're always proud of you all and proud of your kids and the service they give back to the community, but we're always talking about what we can do to make people more proud of Medford, make people more united in the city. And as you said, and as my fellow counselors have said, our football team is really, really shining the way right now. And just wanted to give you my thanks, my support, and go Mustangs.
Set, real quick, seven Boston Globe Player of the Week weeks this year, seven. So.
Council Carviallo, and then I'm just going in order, who cares about football more, then we'll go to you.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, George and I come from a different generation. When sports was a big part of your high school, it developed pride in your high school. There was pride in the city. The city of Medford, we were a football town forever. During my high school years, we used to go to the away games with like four buses of kids. I mean, you went, if you were a high school student, you went to the football game on Saturday afternoon. Thanksgiving Day, God couldn't get a ticket on some years. Chris, you know that. The lines used to be around the corner, people waiting for tickets. Thanksgiving Day used to sell out weeks before the game. And that was the pride of the community, was our football team, our sports teams. We were there, that's what kids went to the school for. And that's part of the reason we've, our team has faltered over the years, and that's why you're seeing a lot of kids going to different schools now, because we have to get that pride back. It was there when I was there, it was there when George was there, when we were dominating teams. You wanted to go to the games, you went to the hockey game, you went to the base, you went to games because it was...
Don't forget the 90s with that soccer program.
Yeah, there was some guy that was on the team.
I'll tell you what, this guy over here, Council Scarpelli was a big in the early 2000s, getting us to go to each other's games. I went to cities, I went to soccer games in cities I didn't know existed because to go watch George's teams play.
There's nothing better than listening to a group of Brazilian kids screaming defense while the offense was on the field. There was nothing better than that.
They tried.
We have other things we should celebrate. Like we should be celebrating the fact that our marching band won the championship and came into this community. I love the fact that they had the police escorts come in. These are things we should be celebrating. We have so many great things, this elevates us. Thanksgiving's a good start, so.
Vice Bares.
Sorry. I was just about to bring up that about 15 years ago was when I picked up a sousaphone and played the fight song for the first time.
See what I mean?
And I would challenge anyone here to sing the, we don't know all the lyrics, but I could sing you the fight song right now.
Let me get it for you.
Playing in my head.
I have it right here for everybody.
See, I was playing an instrument, yeah. It's the best. But I just want to put out there, and Nicole, President Morrell's losing a little bit of...
You have a baby at home. Let's keep talking.
Public participation, I guess.
Public participation.
I'm glad that I've seen probably more smiles on all your faces tonight in a couple minutes I've been out here than the rest. So you know what?
It was worth it.
It's worth staying here.
But I just want to say, too, that 15 years ago was the first time I played it, and if this season's team has broken my 15-year curse, I'm very much appreciative of it. So thank you guys so much, and thank you, Chris, for everything you do.
It's, you know, I tell the kids, it's great to win games, but there's nothing like beating Malden, like, nothing. I mean...
Onward mighty Mustangs, our hopes are pinned on you. We'll stimp the foe as onward we go, onward to victory. Go, go, go! Onward mighty Mustangs, we want a touchdown, hear our cry. Our galloping onto victory for Medford High.
I like that. I like that. This is, with the exception of the time I might have sang that with Bishop Irwin at my confirmation, this is probably the best rendition I've ever had. I gotta start coming in more often.
Chris, there should be something recognizing our Super Bowl team there at Hornell.
I would like to tear the whole complex down and build it up and do something nice, but yeah, there should definitely be something for your uncle there.
Yeah, there should be. Something recognizing the team for that.
We'll work on that.
All right, yeah.
All right. I know you all have families. I'm going to go home and get yelled at.
Thank you, Chris.
You go adjourn first.
Motion to adjourn.
On the motion, Vice Bares to adjourn, seconded by Council Sang, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, meaning adjourn.